I'd like to call the special meeting of the April 27th Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Post Falls to order. Would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of things, as it's already been mentioned, but sometimes it's a little bit muted and hard to hear. If you are wishing to speak tonight, make sure that you have previously went out, signed up, and turn that information in upfront so that we can take care of you. Also, please make sure your phones are either off or on silent, and we are going to try to move through this. I know that there are some individuals that are here for specific public hearings tonight, so we will take a pause, not necessarily a break, but we will take a pause to allow people to come in and to come out. So with that, we will get things started and start with roll call.
Here.
Here.
Schlaauer.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Carey.
Here.
Stephenson.
Here.
Any amendments to the agenda this evening?
There's none.
Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, or presentations?
None there either.
Okay, that will move us to declaration of conflict. Commissioners, any declaration to declare this evening?
None.
None.
Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to the consent counter. Mr. Manley?
We don't have any action items.
Simple enough. That'll bring us to citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on issues that are not on the agenda for this evening. If you wish to make a comment on a planned future project that is going to be on the agenda in the future, we'd ask that you would hold it for that meeting. Is there anyone here tonight that has citizen issues and wishes to address? Look at that. You're already here. Thank you, sir. Again, name, address, and you may go.
Howard Burns, 502 South Rocky Point Court, Post Falls. I'm here for the second time, and I've also spoken to city council regarding notification of zone changes and the process. And I know that the state statute has a minimum that says you must notify residents within 300 feet of the project, and you must post a sign. It doesn't say how big the sign has to be, but I don't know how many of you have driven past the signs for the three items that are on the agenda today. There's one that is noticed by your, the staffs, or the, whatever you want to call the little tiny yellow sign on Prairie Avenue where people go by at 45 miles an hour. It's about one foot off the grade of the street because it's posted down in a swale. You cannot stop the car and read it. If you want to read that sign, if you recognize that, oh, it's a notice sign, you would have to pull over in a dirt road approximately, I'd say, 20 yards from the sign, get on Prairie, making a hard turn onto a dirt road, then walk back through the swale, or just dip to back to the sign and try to read the sign. That's not fair notice to anybody. The developer has a giant four-by-eight sign touting Foxtail quite nearby. That's easy to read, pretty easy to read. The zone change notice for your deal on Prairie and Pleasant View/Maguire is posted on what looks like a five-acre lot. Again, little tiny sign right after the roundabout, trying to pull over and read it, almost impossible if you knew that it was a sign. It's also, again, this one's about two feet up because that's the height of the sign when it's on level ground, at least in Coeur d'Alene. At least they, when they post the sign, they put it up on a stake that's high enough to reach the driver's window, so you wouldn't have to get out of your car if you could get to the sign to read it. So I'll give them one point for that, but there's no reason, the statute of Idaho does not say you cannot have a bigger sign. Let the citizens know what's happening. There's nothing wrong with that. A two-by-four sign that says hearing notice and then how to get hold of people and put it where people can read it, and they can read it when they're driving by in their car. It's fair, it's right. Thank you.
Mr. Burns, before you leave, I was just going to touch base. I was at the city council meeting the night that you did the presentation. I appreciate the fact that you did bring in an example, and I'm sure there'll be some communication. I know you had stepped out after the meeting, but I did want to make sure that you were aware. Mayor did make mention that it is also put in the press. That doesn't necessarily address the issue that you're talking about, but just wanted to make sure because I think you had stepped out when he said that.
I appreciate that, and I know that it's also posted in the newspaper along with the same spots as name changes, probate hearings. You have no idea what's, you have to look through all the legal notices to find it. It's not in big print, and a lot of people don't get the paper. They get it digitally, so they don't even happenstance to go to that page if they're not constantly looking for it.
Absolutely.
Thank goodness the Coeur d'Alene press, at least this time, had some stuff on the page day about hearings.
Yes. So, all right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, do we have any unfinished and/or old business?
There's none.
Okay, then that will bring us to public hearings. We will go ahead and start with our first, and that is the Foxtail PUD amendment and zone change.
Sorry, I'm trying to get this computer to work for me. Media. Hey, Stephanie, could you start the slideshow for me? All right. Thank you. John Manley, planning manager, City Post Falls, presenting the happy. Setting the Foxtail PUD amendment and zone change, case file PUD 2, 2020, and the zone change being the RZNE 3, 2021. The applicant is Connie Krueger. She's here also with Gabe with the Lakeside Real Estate Holdings Group. There's two requests with this, like part of the intro. There's a PUD, and that part is to amend the current approved Foxtail PUD. The exhibit S4 was in your staff report. The actual ultimate build-out at this point's been a little bit different than the S4, and I'll go into that as part of this presentation, but it had a dwelling unit cap of 864 units, and that was to allow, and what they're desiring is to allow more diversity in housing options and increase that to 1331. That was in exhibits A2 and A3 of the staff report. That's an increase of 467 dwelling units. In addition, they're planning on reducing the size of the PUD from 283 to 271 acres. That's a reduction of 12 acres, but that 12 acres is part of the zone change. Looking at the zone change being requested, part of it is because the PUD standards changed. It used to be you'd have one zone, you'd do an overlay district of it, and a lot of times the development didn't match the zoning, be it either commercial, multifamily. You end up with just R1 or CCS, and it didn't match. So that changed, though, toward the zoning now, where the city is requiring the zoning to match the ultimate development pattern. So they're here looking, as part of their PUD, to also coincide some underlying zoning with their proposal. So currently, they got the 700, I mean, the 74.6 acres of existing single-family R1, and they're desiring to mix it up with 12 acres of community commercial mixed, that's the CCM, 25 acres of the high-density R3, and 37.6 of the medium-density multifamily R2 zoning. Did you see there's a recommendation to city council? So city council ultimately will decide on the zone change. On this part, there'll be probably, there'll be two motions, one on the PUD, and one then on how you guys determine on this proposed zone change aspect. Project location is as you see here. It's about a quarter mile east of 41, just east of Zoro, south of Prairie. You see it highlighted in red here. The current land use is a developing Foxtail community. What's not developed is undeveloped vacant lands. The site does not have any significant topology or vegetation matters within it. The water provider for this area would be Ross Point, with the sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. Note that the proposed density, even with everything that's being proposed, ultimately is at 4.91 units per acre. So we're looking at the PUD review criteria. We have a set here. I'm going to call Rob up here and just to Jeff because the first two is pretty much in his wheelhouse, but only thing I have here is where it talks about the proposed PUD provides adequate utilities, services, parking to service the proposed development. So with single-family homes, they're provided, they're required to provide two off-street parking stalls. The multifamily section that you see here that they're proposing, these R2 and R3, however they develop, those would more than likely either provide it through their building permits, if there were some duplexes and whatnot. If they're a multifamily, they would go through the city's site plan review process and be meeting our City Post Falls design standards for parking. Since the rest of this is dealing with more than likely comments from Rob, if you wouldn't mind coming up and discussing the first two criteria points for the PUD?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Let's see, which direction? In regards to transportation, the changes in the PUD do not materially impact the road alignment as it was shown in the initial, which is on the right of the screen, versus what's being proposed now. On the far west side, which would be the left side of the proposal, we have Zorros Road, which is classified as a minor collector roadway, coming up the, somewhat of the middle of the project, or a little bit more of the east end of this north piece. We have Fenecus Road, which is classified as a major collector roadway, dividing the northern piece. We have Kildir Avenue, which is classified as a minor collector. And then on the far north end, you have Prairie Avenue, which is a principal arterial roadway for the City of Post Falls. Hope Avenue splits up the project about through the center east-west, and that is a major collector roadway, and Hope Avenue will have a traffic signal at Highway 41, and that should be constructed during the summer of 2022 for completion. One of the thing, or a couple of the items where city staff is requesting a little bit of changes from what was originally played out is more in the details on this. As the project goes to move north of Hope Avenue, the first thing we would like is for them to do a traffic study to take a look at the intersection of Fenecus Road and Pole Line Avenue to identify if there's any traffic control devices or changes that are needed to that area as they move into that, some of that multifamily and more dense development. We want to make sure there's enough access points and that people from that neighborhood are able to safely and efficiently get onto the existing roadway structure. We're also asking that they extend Hope Avenue, if it is, if it is not already constructed, to construct a small portion of a 32-foot-wide asphalt roadway with no curb and gutter from their western boundary to the improvements that ITD is making with the Highway 41 widening project. That would allow traffic from the subdivision to connect into a traffic signal at Highway 41, providing an alternate access in addition to the signalized access at Pole Line and 41. The other item is as they move north of Kildir, we would want them to do a traffic study to take a look at the intersections of Fenecus with Prairie Avenue, along with Zorros with Prairie Avenue, to see whether or not timing is correct to put in traffic signals or roundabouts with those connections to Prairie Avenue. If those are identified as being needed, that is not an addition, that is anticipated to not be an additional cost to the project, because the City of Post Falls does have a grant project that we are working with Post Falls Highway District on for the widening of Prairie Avenue, and that would be impact fee paid. And within our impact fees, we are also identifying the roundabouts at, or traffic signals at those locations. Furthermore, there was some discussion about additional, or how much parking is being required for the different uses. Realizing the increased density and the multifamily character and what we've seen with other multifamily projects, we are requesting that Fenecus and Zorros Road be built to their full standard, which would include parking on both sides of the road, two lanes of traffic, along with bicycle lanes. In a lot of cases, we'll take our major collectors and minor collectors, and we'll put parking on one side only while having the bicycle lanes and other traffic facilities, but because of the multifamily character, we feel it'd be best to increase that on-street parking and double it by having on-street parking on both sides. That would cover the transportation issues. I'll just take a quick break. Does anyone have any traffic questions at this time?
Questions for Rob?
I don't think so.
Not at this time? Thank you, sir.
Moving on to water and sewer. Water is the real easy one. That's being serviced by Ross Point Water, and I have not seen any comments from them on the water. For water reclamation or sanitary sewer, this increase is an increase of almost 500 dwelling units to the area. So we did have some concerns about what would be this impact to our system. The City of Post Falls has recently made improvements to the 12th Avenue Lift Station, which is about two miles to the south of here, which is a regional lift station that serves most of the Highway 41 corridor. That is eventually going to need to have a force main constructed that will go from the lift station always to the treatment plant. That hasn't been built yet, but it has been identified as to what the trigger flows are for when that is needed. In the original configuration, sewage from Foxtail would flow out to Highway 41 and then down Highway 41. The revised area that was identified with the help of Arcaterra, along with the tech park development, and was put together a couple of years ago, is called the Northeast Quadrant Study. In that study, we identified a routing for sewer that would go down Fenecus Road to Horse Haven Avenue and then provide an additional route down to the 12th Avenue Lift Station. It opened up a lot of additional capacity in that area. With development at the greater capacity, we do not anticipate any issues with the internal sewer pipes for the project. We do want that with each phase that the project does, that the City of Post Falls will go out and take a look at our existing infrastructure to see what are the flows going into the 12th Avenue Lift Station, to see whether or not a proposed phase is going to hit the trigger mark that would require the city to start moving forward on the design and construction of the force main from the 12th Avenue Lift Station to the treatment plant, or construction of a collector line which runs from Fenecus Road at, not Kildir, at Early Dawn Avenue, and then would run south along Fenecus down to Horse Haven. The project is subject to subsequent, not subsequent, user fees, but is required to pay sewer surcharges, so they are paying monies to the city to help pay for the additional sewer lines that are needed from this project to get down to the 12th Avenue Lift Station and for the cost of the force mains. It's fairly complex what's going on out there, but we've done the studies, and we have identified the trigger flows that are needed, and we do have an existing arrangement with Arcaterra as to what their participation is in this beyond just the payment of surcharges with each house and business that goes in. And then, again, we would be identifying with each phase to make sure that they aren't hitting a trigger point, or if a trigger point is hit, that we're taking the correct action to move forward. There could be some limitations if a trigger point is hit for needing sewer improvements, and the city hasn't collected enough impact fees yet, or the surcharge amounts that could delay a phase from moving forward or require that the city enter a separate agreement with Arcaterra or another developer for them to build those improvements, and then we would pay them back as the funds become available. Any questions on sanitary sewer?
No. Anyone?
I actually have a question. So are you anticipating, if this were approved and all those additional units went in, are you anticipating that it will hit the trigger? I mean, you must know about how much it can service, correct?
So for the lines within Foxtail itself, they can build at this greater density, and they will not hit the flow rates within the neighborhood to cause any changes in the infrastructure they're building. In terms of whether or not they will hit the threshold down at the 12th Avenue Lift Station to require those other improvements, that is tough to answer, because it involves also what occurs across the road at the Tulamore subdivision, and any development that happens between this subdivision and the 12th Avenue Lift Station that puts, flows into the Highway 41 sewer line, that also has to be taken into account. So we're looking at the entire region and what's going on.
So what's already approved, units approved, if they were all built in the next year, would the 12th Avenue station hit its trigger?
So utilizing our estimated flows at the 12th Avenue Lift Station right now, if everything from Foxtail was to be built out at what is being proposed now, and with no other development anywhere else within the Highway 41 corridor, we would be looking at being just about at the threshold of needing to design and build the force mains from the 12th Avenue Lift Station to the treatment plant. We're talking 50 gallons per minute plus or minus, and that, oh, I'm not, I'm not going to, 50 gallons per minute can handle about 35, 40 homes beyond. It's not a lot of extra.
But we do have other units approved. Is that?
There are other units within the Highway 41 corridor approved. The thing to remember with over 1,000 dwelling units, you're going to need to ask the proponent as to what their timeframe is, as to what they think is reasonable, as to how they're going to get this implemented, how many phases, how many years that's going to take. In their narrative, they discussed holding back on some of the improvements or the development on the northern sections until after the Highway 41 improvements were done, and possibly even some of the improvements anticipated along Prairie Avenue. Again, I would recommend that you ask with, talk with them directly as to their concept of what they meant by that. 1,000 units is also a large number to be built within a one- or two-year timeframe. Based upon where we're at now, if they were to submit plans to build out the rest of this subdivision, I don't think they'd be able to get to construction on that this year. Most likely, they'd be under construction in 2022, and they might be able to get all that built out in 2022, but then after that, you've got to plat and then start building the homes and building...
But nothing would prohibit them from doing such?
Nothing would prohibit them.
It's just a narrative. It's not, it's not a condition.
Correct. And that's why we put the conditions in there, acknowledging our trigger flows, and that whenever they hit a new phase, we want to be able to go back and say, how close are you to that? If you're there, do we have enough financing to do the parts that the city's required? If not, we need to negotiate with them as to how to get those facilities in place. We don't want to jeopardize the rest of the community just from one phase here.
Okay.
So you say they would be participating in the force main from the lift station all the way to the treatment plant?
They are participating in that now. Each new home that's built in the Foxtail subdivision pays a surcharge of over $2,000 towards that project, and also towards some gravity sewer improvements as well.
Is there any urban renewal money on that project?
There has been urban renewal dollars that have been utilized to do the improvements to the lift station, to get it to where it's at today, where it's capable of handling these increased flows, and because of that, that helped keep, you know, it's a matter of perspective. A couple thousand extra dollars on a home is a lot of money to a person who's buying the house, but if you increase that even more to handle the cost of a lift station, it could have been a much greater number. So urban renewal did help in financing the improvements for the region.
Anyone else? No? Thank you, sir.
I wouldn't want to remember all that.
Yeah.
So moving on to the, some of the planning items, the proposed PUD provides enhanced community design, and it's got some elements here, conserving and incorporating the site's significant natural, scenic, and historic features of the development, if any. And then the next two looks at integrating and mixing of compatible land uses to development and adequately buffering and separating incompatible uses, followed by the proposed uses and lot sizes of the PUD in a manner that blends in with the surrounding uses, neighborhoods, and public facilities located in the city. So I have a couple slides after this that'll kind of expand on those two points. The last one is looking at the 10% open space requirement. With the PUD, you are required to provide 10% open space. This PUD is still consistent with that, but looking at integrating and mixing in with the adjacent environments. You see here, the original approval on the right, what's been done is very similar to this point up to Hope. What has been done is some minor amendments. They've removed some of the multifamily that was intermixed amongst the single family and deferred that out to some smaller single-family lots. So instead of being renter-occupied, intermixed, they created some more missing-middle type housing centrally located, but they still transitioned from the west to the east to these large lots. So if you look, they kept consistent, these half-acre lots next to Big Sky Estates, and then they slowly transitioned to smaller lots. They're using the built environment as a method to transition that single-family home. So if you look at those two, south of Hope and east of the school, they're pretty similar. Where they are differing is where the medium density and high density and commercial is, and when you look into the Highway 41 corridor, the Highway 41 corridor is a pretty busy corridor. That's why it's getting widened. Someday in the future, and that's what comp plans look at, is the future, is Prairie Avenue is going to be a pretty busy road, too, and it may not necessarily be the most suitable corridor to have a lot of single-family homes right up next to that corridor. Equally, the Prairie and 41 intersection's probably going to lend itself to some higher-end uses, creating more noise, traffic, and other pollutant-type nuisances. So what this proposal does is it kind of takes those policy points you see here, blending in with the surrounding, and kind of look at the built environment as a way to mitigate that, rather than using big, large buffer yards and whatnot. So the PUD would be consistent, in staff's opinion, with this criteria as well. Looking at the other criteria, the proposed PUD provides for timely development in the property and security for future completion and maintenance. So you have a block phasing plan that you've seen within the staff report, have different phases that they go to do that. You've seen some conditions that are in the staff report that kind of ties to blocks that are being proposed, and so when they do certain phases, that things get done in a timely manner. You just heard Mr. Paulus speak to, you know, if they're going along in flows, ensuring that there's conditions in so we can get certain improvements in. So that's embedded in the conditions in the staff report to go along with the development. Looking at the sufficient access and structures and allow continual maintenance, the basic grid pattern will allow emergency services to and through the site. The ones that may develop as a multifamily site, all those site plans are done administratively, but they get passed through the fire department, and they review each one of those sites, as well as subdivisions, for continuity and fire access. as well as subdivisions, for continuity and fire access and safety. And then ensuring that the funding mechanism exists for adequately maintained common areas that are not publicly maintained. I'll go back to, so all the private parks there, those will be owned and maintained by an HOA. The one public park that was agreed for the PUD, it's about 8.3 acres, would be city-owned and maintained. So that kind of concludes the PUD review criteria. Any questions for me at this point, before I move on to the zone change aspect?
Anyone questions for John?
In which of the conditions does it spell out the trigger on the sewer lift in each phase?
Rob, do you know what condition that dealt with the triggering of the sewer?
He's looking right now.
Okay.
Small apology, that is in the staff report, in the staff discussion, under the water reclamation portion. It did not get copied into the conditions.
It's not in the condition. Yeah, I was looking.
Right. You know, it'd be good to add that to the conditions, and we would, we would be doing that regardless, but it would be good to put in the conditions.
Do you want to give us a condition that, and we'll include that as we go here in the next...
I would phrase it just as a recommendation, somewhere along the lines of that, with each phase of the PUD, that the proponent would work with the city to verify that sewer is properly available, or service is properly available for sanitary sewer.
And that would be, need to be put in as condition number 13.
Yep. Anything else?
One more thing, Bob.
Yeah.
If tomorrow was decided the trigger was reached, how long, for the, how long, what's the city's timetable on design and implementation of the lift station?
So the lift station is already built. It's ready to go, other than some modifications that would need to be made to it, to switch from what we've just upgraded it to and how it pumps, to switch it over to being able to pump to the wastewater treatment facility. One of the items that I mentioned is the force mains to the wastewater treatment plant. The city of Post Falls, those plans for the force mains are, for all intents and purposes, already completed. We're just waiting to have enough money and hit the trigger points to build it. If that was tomorrow, we'd just have to brush a little bit of dust off. If it's a year from now, there'd be a little bit more dust to make sure we're in compliance with current regulations, and that we haven't changed our mind on how to do things maybe a little bit better. The gravity sewer mains have not been designed from Horse Haven and Highway 41 intersection up to the facility. Normally, for something like that, you'd be looking at, give it a year to a year and a half for full design and then construction. I think a year is realistic, but throw an extra six months just in case.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Melvin, you have something as well?
Thank you, Rob. Bill Melvin, city engineer. I just wanted to add on top of that, that as we're monitoring the flows going on, we're not going to wait till, oh, no, there's no more flow left. We're going to monitor flows and say, now is when we need to start design and start implementation, so we can be ahead of this to allow the development to continue to proceed. So it's not, it's not like, you know, hope nothing's going to occur for the next couple of years. It's just really a matter of us monitoring it, staying ahead, and then taking that action to implement as we move forward, so.
Perfect.
Zone change criteria. So here's the part where we're going to be looking at the criteria on that recommendation of however it may be to city council. So we're looking at amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the comprehensive plans, future land use map. It also should be in accordance to the goals, policies founded in the Post Falls comprehensive plan. Zoning also looks at items like street classifications and traffic patterns, not really going to go into that a whole lot, because I think we covered a lot of that with the PUD. Existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic natural features. There's really no known significant geographic or natural features. But looking at the zoning, currently, it's the R1. That's why the request for some of the zone change to go with the PUD north of Hope. Looking at the future land use map, so the future land use map may be difficult to see as the pigmentation is not super distinct, but the lighter yellow is the R1, or sorry, it's single-family. And these are land use designations, not zoning districts. So this is low-density residential is the yellow. We got medium-density residential being the orange, and a business commercial being the pink. The proposed zoning districts are consistent with those land use designations. I would state that these designations were distinctly brought up as part of the public process, and for many of the reasons that were brought up as part of the PUD is to help mitigate some of those uses at Prairie 41 and blend as you get to the lower densities to the southeast. Here's where you see that zoning districts allowing for some of that blending and being consistent with that future land use map. You look here, the commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. Once again, it just keeps reiterating, wherever you have a lot of intensity and uses, your zoning and densities generally increases and transitions away. And that leads into the next one that says, as you have neighborhood commercial and lower density, as it gets further away from these areas, you're generally going to see that lower density in the neighborhood commercial activities. And the last one's industrial zoning, and it's looking at, and that's not even being requested or germane tonight. That pretty much wraps up that zone change review criteria. These are the agencies that were routed. We did get some comments from the Post Falls School District. They commented, and they remain neutral on it. The Department of Environmental Quality had some general comments, more to deal with the construction of it. Post Falls Highway District, they decided just to remain neutral. Comments, questions for me?
Any other questions for staff?
No, not here.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
And I'll try to help get this, I struggle just to get it started, though, so.
Mr. Manley maneuvers through our field of technology. I'll invite the applicant to come up.
It's the PDF right here. Is that it?
Looks like it, yeah.
What do you think?
Perfect. I'm not going to let him.
Okay. I meant to roll through this instead of click through it, I think, so bear with me if I get turned around a little bit. Planning Commission, Planning Commission Chair, thank you for allowing us to be here today to present this project. My name is Connie Krueger, and with me is Gabe Gallinger, who tried to walk up and say hello, but we have social distancing in place, so. Gabe has been long involved with this project and will be here to answer some of the more technical questions. We know that it's important to understand who your applicant is, and so with that, John, is there a way to get this to...
See, I'm not alone.
...focus in a more traditional way? Sorry about that. Oh, I moved that.
No, so.
Not sure. Oh, there we go. Thank you. That works. Okay. So it's always important to understand a little bit about the developer who is in front of you, who's making the request. So in this case, you'll see in the application materials, Lakeside Capital Group, you're familiar with Arquitera Homes, Core Development is another one of the groups, and these are some of the projects that they are involved with throughout our region, and also over in the Spokane area. We're limited on in time, so we don't want to delve down into them too much, but again, Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, lots of projects there that you may be familiar with, including the Foxtail Development Reserve, the trails, quite a number of them. The property information and the location, we've already reviewed, but it's, this is kind of an important graphic to take a look at, because this actually shows the location of the property within the arterial and highway street system. And so as you can see, we're directly south of Prairie Avenue and directly to the east of Highway 41, and we're served by a number of different, more localized arterial systems, including Meyer and Poline. So we've covered what we're proposing. So again, just a quick little breakdown of what actually has been constructed. You're probably very familiar with the Red Fox neighborhood, which is largely built out, and the Parkland neighborhood is still under construction, so there's quite a number of units that we're still building out in that area. The Treaty Route school site is constructed, and the school is operating, a really nice school site there. And the area that we're talking about is called the Gray Fox neighborhood. So again, just a, kind of the nuances of what our proposal are, is we're actually looking at revising the PUD boundary, and this is on the recommendation of the city staff, who's indicated that the new CCM zoning isn't really appropriate within a PUD. And so it would be removing this and rezoning this to CCM, and then revising the underlying zoning from R1 to R2 and R3. And what we've done is we've stepped this up in terms of the density that would be available in each of these areas, and kind of melding the higher-density districts out as you head north toward Prairie, and trying to integrate to the south with a little bit of a lower density. It's also important to note that there was multifamily housing that was part of the original PUD approval, and it has not been constructed. And so with this, we're taking that concept and kind of moving it to the north, and obviously adding some additional units with that. There are some circumstances that we think are important to be aware of. The first is, of course, that the project was initially planned and went through permitting in the early to mid 2000s. And the city, we're now in 2020, the city has a new comprehensive plan and a new vision for this area. We do think that the housing needs are changing, and that this is important to address for economic development, and in terms of affordability as well as supply. There are a number of different transitioning land uses as we go throughout the region. We see a lot of our communities starting to transition, in particular, along highway corridors. And also, this is an area with available and developing construction with the Highway 41 improvements. With the new comprehensive plan, we have the Highway 41 North Focus area, and so you can see a little bit of a blowout here of where this property is relative to that. And this would be Prairie Avenue, with the pink would be the business commercial, and the orange is the medium-density residential. And our amendment is designed to be consistent with city's new comprehensive plan. Little bit of information about the 41 North Focus area, I will not go through all of this with you, but if we take a look at some of the focal points here, this area is designated for multifamily, commercial, and tech uses near higher-classified roadways. It's an area where we're looking at the facilitation of baggage road systems, and we'll talk about that a little bit. And then also having appropriately scaled commercial development with nearby residential areas. And there's also language in there related to supporting, kind of spurring the development of multifamily residential in that area. The city's comprehensive plan with the new land use designations establishes implementing zone districts. And so when we take a look at the medium-density land use, which would be directly to the north of Hope Avenue, the designation within the comprehensive plan is for five to 16 units per acre. The implementing zone districts are listed here to the right, and the implementing zone districts actually have a range of 12 to 21 units per acre. Our proposal is at 7.7 units per acre. So you can see, we're not trying to maximize on the full density allowed by the comprehensive plan, or that would be allowed by the range of densities that would be available in that area. What we have been interested in is having the housing types that we would like to have. And so with the R2 zoning and with this density cap that we're proposing on our own development, we would be looking at the inclusion of possibly everything from single-family residential on smaller lots, duplexes, twin homes, townhomes, and multifamily. These are some of the housing product types. Arquitera and Core Development have been working quite hard on developing different product types that could be brought into this area. What's unique about this is they've traveled to various areas, and they've looked at different product types, and they've talked to builders in our area about what would fly, and really have looked at the need to be able to address safety and security needs, as well as to work with our weather here in North Idaho. And so this product type with the two-story multifamily actually has interior access via a direct garage, door from the inside of the garage, or if you're in an upper unit, you would have a dedicated staircase. So that's kind of a nice thing, you're coming home late at night, you know, you're able to enjoy not going back out into the weather again. We've talked about the variety of different housing types that would be available, but here's a little bit of a recap of that. And if you take a look down here in the lower right, these are actually some of our single-family residential on narrow lots. And these are actually being implemented in the Parkland neighborhood right now, quite in demand. A lot of people are buying these as, you know, right now, buying these lots, and this is something that they'd like to continue in this area, and that also helps with that transition in melding. This is an area that we feel will develop over several years, and that the owner, as different needs develop, would be able to address a range of housing types over that time. This is a conceptual site plan, and you can see the eight-acre city park in the center, and then you see these 12 to 14-unit multifamily direct-access units. The implementing zone district for business commercial, actually, as we've talked about before, in the comprehensive plan, actually requires at least eight units per net acre. And the implementing residential zone districts range from 12 to 21 units. We're proposing 15.4 units, and again, we're interested in the structure types that are afforded to, by the zoning. And again, stepping that from the R2 up to the R3 zoning. I have the CCM highlighted, because the CCM is part of our proposed rezone, but it actually is not part of the proposed PUD. But you can see what might be available. We have no plans for that area at this time. These are product types. Again, work has gone into developing different product types, so in this case, this would be a three-story multifamily with one to three bedrooms and approximately 16 to 24 units per building. But again, we'd like to reserve the ability to mix in different housing types. We are seeing such a demand for the single-family that might be something that we explore a little bit in the lower 40, and then looking perhaps more at twin homes, duplexes, other options in this area. This, again, will develop over several years. And this is a conceptual plan. This shows you the maximum density of what would be allowed by the density cap that we're proposing of 384 units. And in this case, you see townhomes and multifamily with a direct access, as well as some of the walk-up product type. And then here's another layout that would show if we were just to do walk-ups. So again, no decisions have been made, we're a ways away from that. We're simply trying to establish the zoning and the general PUD concept. We do feel there are a lot of, we're all hearing a lot about housing and growth and development, and with that, we think it's important to address the changing housing needs and how that relates to economic development. In the packet tonight, you'll see a support letter from Parkwood Properties, and they actually are the owners of the property directly to the west of our property. And at the staff's recommendation, we're working with them on coordinating frontage roads and infrastructure timing related to Zoros Road. And I think these are some really interesting statements that they've included in their letter, because they are one of the primary commercial property owners and managers in the North Idaho region. And so in the letter, they state that they recognize that the city council in particular desires more commercial development. But as experienced managers and developers, they do believe that that depends on the number of rooftops, and in particular, the number of rooftops that are in close proximity. And so if you're familiar with Parkwood... they own a lot of properties that are located along state highways, along regional arterials. And this is something that they're very well aware of. And they're interested, of course, in having a balanced community with diverse housing and speak a little bit to the housing shortage and the desire to have options. We also spoke to some of our regional economic development leads in the region. And what we're finding is as they are going out to recruit companies, the question used to primarily be is where is the talent base? And now what they're hearing is what does the housing market look like? So before we move our company here, we want to ensure that the housing is there for our employees. Before the pandemic, the housing market was healthy. They didn't anticipate the surge in the market. And so they're scrambling to find solutions to recruiting people to come to the area, recruiting companies. And they're finding that the employees that they're bringing to the area are on waiting lists of six months or more and feel that it's really vital that we address multifamily rentals and affordable housing and that there's a little inventory under the 400K price range. I've had some discussion with various planners throughout the area. And what we're hearing related to regional housing needs is a lot of discussion about the mountains, lakes and our transportation systems limiting where growth can go and the need to increase density and offer a diverse range of housing because of those constraints. Talking about how the old model of having entry level homes on a quarter acre likely is going away and that as the new buyers come into the market, they may need to step in maybe a townhouse product or something similar to that and then level up over time. And so there are concerns that if we continue with a traditional model of the quarter acre lot development, that it will not sustain a balanced community. It's also really important to know that the price of steel and wood has increased dramatically. And so this is another really important factor to consider when we have larger development companies that can sustain that fluctuation, that are trying to plan for and put product on the market in a few years. And really being, you know, aware that they are, they can actually withstand some of that rolling tide. Getting to the infrastructure in this project, we, our park plan for the eight plus acre park was coordinated with City Parks Department. You'll see the list of amenities and the narrative that go with that. We do do a lot of additional detailed design work. And so this is just actually a photo that I took, gave was in my office the other day for another project and just kind of his hand scroll notes. And I see a constant discussion happening with this company about how to provide a quality living experience and really detailing these out far beyond what we see with just the park requirements. In this development, there's a large variety of open space. We have the public park, neighborhood parks and the school site. With Gray Fox, we'll be at nearly 13% and we have additional green space planned. These are the city required traffic studies. And we actually have two more down in this area and some possible off-site road extensions in the frontage road that we talked about. We did a little traffic modeling for this area just before the meeting, had our analysts look at it. And looking even without the Hope Avenue extension, we are looking at a level of service C at Zoros and Fenicus where they intersect Pole Line. So we have looked at the comments that came in from the public and a couple of responses to that related to timing of infrastructure. We still have over 500 units to be constructed in the original PUD. So we're not seeing a real rush on the impacts to the highway and, you know, other things that are out there that would be over and above the original approval. Highway 41 should be completed in 2022. And the design and approval of our plans will probably take about 18 months to two years to do. And it's unlikely that we'll be seeking any CFOs within the next two years related to what we're proposing tonight. We also have staff conditions related to traffic studies as well as some direct physical improvements that would also mitigate impacts as we move forward. There were concerns about local traffic. And it's important to note that the traffic will feed through collector's systems temporarily to the south and as we build out into help Kildare and other future frontage roads, but not through local access roads and neighborhoods. And we have direct access onto regional arterials. And we'll address that, of course, in the future. Again, this project began in 2006. Housing and commerce have changed. Brick and mortar is on the decline. Housing needs have grown. Highway 41 is an area where we've had a commercial long anticipated. We have no commercial plans planned right now. And again, we're seeing a development structure similar to your comprehensive plan that abuts both sides of the highway system and is considered more of a transitional pattern of development. Just as a little bit of an aside, low income multifamily is right now not a target market of the company. Sometimes that's a concern with multifamily. And we've talked extensively to the school districts who've indicated that multifamily is desirable near school sites.
We are out of time.
I only had two more.
Okay.
I'm good.
Go ahead and hit them real quick.
Okay. So it's important to note that our development may actually be lower density because again, we're seeing a changing needs with these single family products. And no one really knows where the market will go. So again, what we're trying to do is get some flexibility within what's currently allowed in the comprehensive plan.
Can you go back two slides right there? So block C and D are estimated to be at 18 months or two years before completed the multifamily. We currently have 12 conditions, adding a 13th with the trigger point. How do you guys feel, are you opposed to possibly putting a 14th condition in there that basically just covers that, that indeed, that block C and D multifamily piece does not move until the completion of Highway 41 and the expansion?
No, I think we're open to that. And I'll certainly have Gabe, who is working a little more directly for the company, address that.
Good evening, Commissioner. Gabe Gallanter, Core Development. I am the engineer of record for most of these projects that we do. And so I have a pretty extensive history with what's going on and what we're planning and integrated and all those things. And I can tell you that the 18 to 24 months for C and D really applies to C. C will develop before D. They won't be concurrent. Utilities will come from the south to the north. So we really, we don't recognize there to be a significant impact to the Highway 41 system prior to completion. So I think we would be acceptable to a condition that limited the certificate of occupancy of any of those buildings prior to the completion of the street. That would allow us to do design, planning, review, some earthwork, some infrastructure improvements while Highway 41 is still being completed. But we wouldn't have the impact of residents in that area until 41 was complete. So if it was a condition that limited us to the certificate of occupancy within those areas, I think that would be an acceptable condition.
Okay. Just wanted to throw it out there. Any other questions for applicants?
Yeah, I have one. So the original PUD is how many units? I know what's in here.
Eight hundred and sixty-four.
And how many are completed at this time?
Two hundred and twenty, well, so platted or homes?
How many units? So how many are, how many homes?
So we've, we've got just under 220 homes completed right now. But we have more lots that are platted. There are homes in construction. There are still vacant lots that haven't got building started on them.
Under construction and, okay, okay. Okay, that was my question.
Anything else for applicant?
No.
Nope. All right. Thank you very much. Public comment. Those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
None.
Those opposed?
We have several. We do have one. Her name is Tammy. She is on Zoom. I just need to find her. She wishes to speak. So Tammy should be able to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Tammy, if you just state your name and address and then you have four minutes.
Yes, my name is Tammy Lang. I reside at 2890 North Cypress Fox Loop. And my concerns are, well, a couple of things. One, when I purchased my home, I was the second home in this second edition of Foxtail. One of my questions was, what is the planned development of the community? And I was given that plan verbally and looked at some drawings and whatnot. I purposely did not choose a house that was next to the apartment development off of Pole Line because I didn't want to deal with the traffic. I could have built my home elsewhere, but I built it here based on the planned community. And now my concern is not so much the apartments or the multi-dwelling units or whatever you want to call them are not right next to my home. I won't even see them, but it's getting in and out of my development. Already this morning, and I know many of us work from home, this morning I left my home at 8:30. It took me almost four minutes to get on the Pole Line with just the traffic to the school at Foxtail. If we add this many dwelling units, how is that going to impact getting in and out on Fenicus Road to Pole Line from my home? That's my concern. And I'm also concerned that it was a master planned community. I could have built elsewhere. I could have built at the Reserve with Arquitera. But based on what they told me, this had a master planned community and it did not include apartments very specifically. So I would like to understand, how is this going to affect me? How will this affect my costs for HOAs? And how is this going to affect me getting in and out of my community and my neighborhood?
Okay. Tammy, thank you. We'll go through all of those that are against and then give the applicant opportunity for rebuttal. So hopefully we can get those answered. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, we will go through these. On the public comment, there is a list of questions rather than field, since a lot of these are simply yes or no. Do I need to read through every single one of these and answer yes or no? Or can we highlight on just comment?
So can you repeat that?
Absolutely. So, so we've got, we've got these letters that are put together. And it basically says, in the requested zoning district compatible with the street classification, or is it compatible, street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land use? Do I need to read through every single one of these and give them their answer? Or can I just focus on comments? I'm just wondering what needs to be read in and what doesn't.
I would read in there yes or no to one, two, three.
So I can just say one, two or three?
I would, yeah.
All right. I'll highlight it. We'll get middle ground. Is request zoning compatible with streets, classification, existing development? No. Comment, once again, the developer, builder buys property and attempts, and attempts to change zoning. Commercial high density is assigned to certain areas. There was, there was no, no answer. Limiting, limited or neighborhood commercial, lower density residential is typically assigned for properties that are further away. Says no. It says this will be urban if allowed to continue. Industrial zoning is typically assigned for property with sufficient access. Says this does not have sufficient, sufficient access at all. And the last one is a request in zoning district consistent with the goals and of the comprehensive plan. No, comprehensive plan needs to be looked at again. Another individual wishing to, does not wish to speak but in opposition. Don, is it Elsher, Elsner? If I butcher that name, I do deeply apologize. I'm going to be reading a lot of names this evening, so please ask for your grace. It says no bait and sweet switch. Keep present zoning. Corey Kilham is in opposition, does not wish to speak. The builder said no multifamily homes. They should stick to their word. There is enough apartments going in already. No need for more. Also in opposition, does not wish to speak, is Nicole Hunter. I'm very concerned about the traffic on Meyer. It was not designed for that much traffic and there is no room to expand without putting units, without cutting into people's yards. There'll be plenty of extra traffic without almost 50 additional dwellings. Howard Burns is, does not wish to speak and I do not see. Mr. Burns, are you?
I'm here. I thought I'd put down and wanted to speak.
You did not, but since I have your information and you've been up before, why don't you come on up?
Thank you.
And you have four minutes.
Before I start my four minutes, can I get the slide that shows existing and previous? Or what's existing and what's proposed? I think it was the fourth or fifth slide. Technological wizard.
Until it counts.
I had to show the two of them side by side.
There you want.
There you go.
There we go. There we go.
All right. Super. Thank you very much.
Give Mr. Burns name, address.
Howard Burns, 502 South Rocky Point Court, Post Falls.
Thank you, sir. You have four minutes.
All right. So it ties somewhat into my noticing when, when the packet went out for this project and the zone change, this exhibit was not in it. There was no way to know because the exhibit that was in the plan was the original Foxtail plan. It didn't show where the zone chain went. You had to ascertain that from reading the information. It is disingenuous of staff, as far as I'm concerned, to come up here and say that the project is now going to have 4.91 units per acre as though that's a wonderful thing. When it was approved, it was 3.8. It was approved at that in 2005 and it's a great project. It isn't being built like the exhibit that was handed out to everyone. It's being built, the part that shows here is entirely different. Where did the ball fields go? I don't know. I looked at it, not being a Foxtail resident. I thought that's what was being built and that they ignored the apartments in the center. Instead, what we see is a whole different project down here. I don't know if the people in Foxtail even know that. In regards to the density up there, your applicant was very fair. They commented that it's 7.7 units per acre in the R2 and 15 units per acre in the R3. And they neglected to mention that they're allowed to have 20-some units per acre in the CM zone, even though they aren't deciding what they're going to do with that yet. So there's a whole nother bank of apartments shown. The exhibit here does not show 300 apartments under construction down here to the south. They're underway. It doesn't show at Prairie and Highway 41 that the quote unquote shopping center, the plans that I've seen show 240 apartments buried behind one grocery store, some shops, a bank and a fast food joint. Now, there's all kinds of stuff happening that isn't shown to the public when you're talking about this. There's tremendous number of apartments that are already online and coming. We don't need more apartments here. It doesn't need to be that dense. The original plan was great. It was looked over. All of the arguments Mr. Manley gave for the PUD and all the rest of it, they applied to the original plan and they were great. And there's absolutely no need to change this now. None.
Thank you, sir. We'll ask that you guys keep your applause. Thank you. Next wishing to speak, Kim, is it Eichler? Eichler? Again, I apologize. Does not wish to speak. And it does say, does not mark, I'm assuming, in opposition. You need to honor no zone change. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Mr. Bob Flowers. Mr. Flowers, come up.
Bob Flowers, 3914 East Maplewood Avenue. Well, Foxtail has been a great development. But the one thing that the city has done is bent over backwards every time these guys want something. The city has jumped through hoops here, there, everywhere to get things approved. I believe that you ought to actually hold them to their, they've only built out 200 and something homes so far of approved 800 and something. So there's still 600 homes. Say two, two cars per home, another 1,200 goddamn cars that are already going to be going through there. that are already going to be going through there. And now you're adding multifamily. Multifamily, as far as I'm concerned, has been built out in Post Falls over the last couple of years. We, we don't need it right now. We don't need high-density multifamily housing. Make them build what they agreed to to begin with. That's what they agreed to. That's what the city agreed to. There's no reason to change the rules of the game halfway through it. There's a lot of people that bought homes in that development on their word that there weren't going to be all these apartments. Now, I'm sure we're going to find something in the original like they did up by the American Legion where all of a sudden the homeowners up there suddenly found out they were going to have a whole load of apartments dumped right in front of them because it was back in the agreement 10, 20 years before that, the original one. But I will bet you if you actually asked those folks there, they didn't know anything about these apartments and they don't want them. They don't want all the additional traffic. 41, they say is going to be done by 2022. If that happens, I don't know, I may go kiss the highway over there. But, because I don't see it and I've been watching this progress. I've been in the construction trades most of my life. On top of that, on the 41 project, what hasn't been mentioned here tonight is a big, well, supply, supply and demand. Right now, they're hurting and I, those traffic signals you want there on Hope, you ain't going to see them until at least '23. And it just, I wish I was better organized for this, but dumping that many multifamily homes into that area, that tightly packed, just doesn't make sense to me. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Flowers, you did mention multifamily and definitely not a need. Do you know, have we seen any current statistics as what the, what the vacancy rate is?
Well, I know that at this point, no, sir. I have not seen it. Last time I saw it was around one point something. But do you know that over 25% of the residential housing in Post Falls, at this point, without all these future developments that have already been constructed or are going to be constructed, over 25% of residents in this town are apartments now? That's more than enough.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Mike Burner, Bernier?
Mike Bernier, 3560 North Meyer Road. And I think we moved in onto Meyer Road and did our due diligence. A lot of people in Foxtail did their due diligence. And as the gentleman before me was saying, this is a little bit of a shift in what was committed to and understanding as we all made purchasing decisions about our neighborhoods. And in particular on Meyer Road, I was disappointed that there was such lack of information about the impacts to Meyer Road. I appreciate the drawing back here, but I don't know or understand what, for example, no light on the intersection, the current problems that people are having getting out of Foxtail, what type of shortcuts they may derive in their minds to come out on Ford, out on the, on the Meyer. So I don't know if they're going to come out on one of those two, our two, our two roads on the Meyer and go north, south, or whatever, but that's increasing traffic. I don't know what's going to be done to improve those intersections. The staff doesn't seem to have indicated any indication that there's going to be any study about it or whatever. I don't know, but it just, I don't think, two points, I guess. We did our due diligence, we bought in the neighborhood in these places and this is changing what we had done. And number two, I don't think there's enough consideration to the impacts of the people on Meyer Road.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Tom Pearson.
Tom Pearson, 3700 Meyer Road. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. Of course, my concern also is the traffic. I don't think anybody in Cootie County thinks we don't have traffic problems. In fact, I, I've been raised here, I raised my family here, used to let my kids enter driver's ed at 14 and a half and my youngest is very upset that he doesn't get to start till he's 16 or 17 because it's extremely dangerous to drive out there. I think we all see accidents every day. When I hear that there's, you know, a proposed 800 more units coming in just in this one development, not to mention all the other ones being planned and average two cars, another 1,600 cars being added to just this country block, that's very disturbing when we think about Meyer Road here and two more already. So I've been raised in the area, used to live out in Ratham area for quite some time. We moved to Rath, right here to Meyer Road, two and a half years ago. Never had to stop to turn in my driveway. The other day I had to stop and wait for four cars. Now, that sounds kind of funny, but it's kind of wild. What's it going to be like soon? There is going to be a lot of traffic, so that is concerning. Also, the way I look at it is the job is easy. In 2005, they said this is the plan. Everybody said it was great. It's nice. The larger parcels that were agreed upon back then to make a nice transition to the acreage parcels that I live on, along with the other people on Meyer, and the Big Sky Properties fit nicely. Now, they want to change this. Now, there is going to be, there is a vacancy problem here in Cootie County. There's a lot of people that want to move here. Just about everybody I talk to, I talk to a lot of people in my business, they're moving here because they like the rural lifestyle. They're leaving California, they're leaving Seattle, they're leaving these places. And to turn it into, it's going to happen, people are going to move here. But you know what? Let them go to a place where they are zoning and can do the high-density housing. Foxtail didn't have it originally. I don't think we need to change it. To me, the decision is easy. It's already been approved in 2005. Why change it and upset a bunch of property owners that decisions have been made? I, I can imagine if a lot of people that have bought in Foxtail knew about this, they probably wouldn't be very happy, like the one lady said early, you know, early on. She made her decision of master planned community. I know me living on, on the acreage side here, I'm not thrilled about a bunch of apartment complexes coming in and not against people and apartments, but just the traffic. We have so many traffic problems already and nothing has been addressed about Meyer Road. One thing that drives me nuts is I see apartments and housing developments, and I've been in real estate and I've developed land and everything. It's hilarious that all you have to do as a developer is kick out one lane along one section of your development and the developer gets to walk away. That's all he has to do to improve the roads. And then everything else is left on the city and the highway department. But that's a whole nother story. So I am in opposition. I think, I don't know anybody that says, yeah, let's, let's put more cars on the road. That'd be wonderful. So I would implore the commission to make the developers stick with their plan. There's only one reason they want to do this, is to make more money. They're making plenty. Property values have gone up considerably. They're going to make plenty of money on Foxtail. They're making plenty of money on Foxtail. They want to make more, go buy another piece of land, do it somewhere else, get it approved. They're making plenty of money. Keep their word. Let everybody be happy with what they bought. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have any others that came in or related others? Okay. So at this time, I would invite the applicant up for rebuttal if there's anything that they want to cover.
So I think a lot of the comments tonight have been related to traffic and one of the things that, you know, has occurred to me a little bit in listening to this is that when it comes to, we've talked a lot about the different areas that will be studied. And when you study an area like this, you, you, basically you take traffic count, you look at this from a, what's called a level of service standard. So usually a community has a level of service where they have acceptable queuing standards at certain intersections. And so the studies that we've talked about will actually lead to us going in and taking a look at these intersections that you see here. And these two, which I don't have marked, that we have produced some traffic projections for. And again, as the project develops over time, we'll actually see some of those traffic patterns change. We'll see more of the east-west connectivity, more of the north-south. So we anticipate, of course, that a lot of the development in areas like this will actually feed out into these roundabouts that are planned out here on Prairie Avenue. And there are projects that are planned for Prairie Avenue. The city engineer actually was talking about this a little bit earlier. And there's actually grant funding to come in and to make improvements right now to Prairie Avenue. And it sounds like that project is moving forward pretty quickly. So we have improvements to State Highway 50, 41. We have the improvements to Prairie that are planned. We know that we'll be making some local connections over to some controlled intersections and providing road networks that will allow for dispersment of these impacts. There was a comment related to not having, you know, the appropriate road infrastructure surrounding it. And I just want to point out that all of these roads that we show here are either collectors or arterial road systems, so they are designed to handle higher traffic volumes. When it comes to a road like Meyer Road, we actually, within our current approval, will be making this connection over to Meyer Road and feeding out. So that will be happening, you know.
This year.
Yeah, this year. And that's with the current Foxtail PUD. We do have a comment letter that came from, I think, the director of the Post Falls Highway District, which was no comment. So we really haven't heard any concerns addressed in this area regarding the road. So as we see growth and development occur in areas such as when development moves further east, there will be other improvements that will be made and often with traffic studies and things like this, you are required to come over just like what we have here and make some of these off-site improvements. So there are a lot of tools that the city has to be able to work with, analyze congestion to an acceptable level of service that they have adopted and then for improvements to be made, both onsite and off-site. So when you're, when you're used to a certain level of traffic in your neighborhood, of course, that's not the answer that you want to hear, but that is how it functions from a city's perspective. And again, the city is charged with, you know, looking at the greater needs of the community and they're also charged with finding ways to fit people and, and their homes into appropriate areas where they've determined that growth to be acceptable. And without, you know, I go back to kind of this discussion that we had about the city's Highway 41 project, if I can find it here. And this is the Highway 41 North Focus Area. This is a very recently adopted comprehensive plan. This is not an older document. And with that, you can see that the city clearly looked at and contemplated changes around these arterial and highway road systems that would allow for transitions of density and probably focusing in an area like this because it does have appropriate infrastructure. So when you look at areas to place development and to place growth, you have to look kind of on a community-wide basis, on a region-wide basis. And it tends that you, you do tend to see these types of development patterns emerging in these areas. So without just taking a little further look at this focus area, and what we see here is such growth is expected to spur commercial uses adjacent to the highways, especially as top-controlled intersections. And here we have, "Land values will pressure development to attract a range of residents offering shared amenities, housing, variety, and neighborhood-scale services." So we didn't just go out and design this and we're not bringing you a proposal that completely flies in the face of your comprehensive plan. We're bringing you a proposal that we think actually fits within your comprehensive plan. And we're assuming that when these planning choices were made, they were made looking at the entire community and what the needs were and how to accommodate growth and development. And part of what we've done with this is we have tried to step down density and we have looked at implementing density caps that we would be, you know, proposing to impose on ourselves. As far as comments related to, you know, things changing, again, time has gone on, things do change, and that's what this public hearing process is for. It's for us to be able to have that opportunity and for us to civilly propose something and to have feedback and to look at all of the issues and all of the planning and the things that have gone into developing an area like this and to have decisions made about that. And so that, that is what the process is about and we're, we're glad that we're here tonight to be able to participate in this. I don't know, do you have a comment? The cost for HOAs, I think, wasn't.
So, yeah, there was another comment on, on cost for HOAs. The developments themselves, if there are multifamily developments that have clubhouses, swimming pools, other amenities associated, those amenities would be covered by dues and costs associated or generated from those multifamily developments. Those would not be costs that would spread back to existing residents or, or any of the other single-family residents that are yet to be built. So those would be costs that would be wholly absorbed within those multifamily developments.
Other questions of applicant?
Just so I understand, the only improvement you guys are going to make along Meyer Road would be the, the collector that comes out? That's already in the existing plans?
Hope Avenue. So our, currently we're approved, we have current construction plans approved to extend Hope Avenue out to Meyer Road and make that connection. We have plans under review right now to do our frontage improvements on a portion of the Meyer Road section adjacent to our development. But with the second phase of the Parkland neighborhood, we would connect Hope and do some of those frontage improvements on Meyer Road, widening it to its half-street. Full build out.
Thank you.
No, no worries. Thank you.
Other questions? Anyone?
No, sir.
Nancy, I'm trying to look around.
Oh, no, I'm good.
You good? Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we gavel out of this and open it up for, for comment amongst the commissioners, do we have any additional conversation, questions for staff?
I had one question, maybe for Rob. I'm looking at the, I don't know what, sheet 44 on, that we have. It's basically the transportation plan here. It, it seems like the major concern folks have is the traffic and, and they bought into a development with, without the expectation of multifamily traffic. And I can understand that. Can, looking at the minor and major collector and proposed major collector here on Hope Avenue, can you tell us how you see the traffic leaving the multifamily, proposed multifamily area and how would that, would it be going through the, these neighborhoods?
So the proponent mentioned during a portion of their rebuttal that they anticipated a lot of the traffic from the multifamily area heading to the north to Prairie Avenue and accessing Prairie Avenue from either Zorros or Fenwickus. I would generally concur with that for the percentage of the traffic that would be heading towards Cordillane. That would be the quickest way to do that. Now, traffic that would be heading towards downtown Post Falls or Spokane for business or recreation, that traffic I would anticipate would be utilizing Hope Avenue to head out to Highway 41 and then head south. Now, there would be a certain percentage of traffic that would still head down Fenwickus and Zorros all the ways to Pole Line Avenue, but I think that would be a, a small minority of, of that overall traffic. of, of that overall traffic.
As one of your conditions, are you, it looks like you approved their, their street plans. Is it possible for the city to encourage Hope? It looks like the, the major impact, it looks to me like, would be people that didn't take Hope Avenue to forty-one. And so can we, does the city have the ability with your conditions to influence the developer's sizing of Hope Avenue so that it is a, a major collector and does funnel the majority of that traffic away from the existing neighborhoods?
So it's my opinion that by us requiring Hope Avenue to be a major collector, that that, by its nature of how it's designed, the width of the road, the parking, the bicycle lanes, all that add together, and how we treat stop signs or roundabouts on Hope Avenue, that that will encourage traffic to utilize that road. Within the conditions that we have in there, and I forget which condition it is, it does require that as they proceed with development north of Hope Avenue, that there's a thirty-two foot wide piece of asphalt to connect Hope Avenue westerly to, to make that bridge connection to Highway forty-one. I think that would help alleviate a lot of that initial development. Kind of as a cardholder or a hedging-your-bet type of thing, that's why we requested also for the development of a traffic study to take a look at the intersection of Fenecus Road and Pole Line Avenue as well. But, you know, my professional opinion is I think that making that connection on Hope Avenue, as soon as you start moving north of Hope with development, will facilitate a lot of that traffic getting out to Highway forty-one. It'd be a lot faster than taking that additional quarter mile to get down to Pole Line.
Yeah, I think so.
So the reference there is Condition Eight that deals with that.
Does that, do you have any other questions?
Mm-hmm. Other questions for staff? Rob, since we have him here?
Not for Rob. I wanted to ask probably Field and John a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Obviously, we got two motions here. Approve them both, deny them both. But do they, do they have to go hand-in-hand? Could you approve the PUD and not do the zone? Then how does that work with the CCM? You see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, so you'd be making a motion on the PUD separate.
Which is like the boundary.
Yeah, but it'll be conditioned upon the determination of zoning at City Council. So how you make that recommendation of zoning to council plays indirectly how it affects the PUD. If that makes any sense. I don't know, Field, if you want to add any other?
So you're going to approve the PUD and say, keep the current zoning? And then what does it do with that twelve?
Well, if you approve it, you'd be approving as proposed, and so it's with those uses. And so what you're seeing in the PUD is quadrants, those block C, the block D, the proposed uses. So if you went down that route, it would be ultimately waiting for the PUD zoning, underlying zoning, that determination at council to support that. If that fell short at council, then even if you approved the PUD, no longer would the PUD be valid because it'd be inconsistent with our PUD code.
So they pretty, they, they kind of just go hand-in-hand then? So you have, you approve both or you deny?
And again, this is a recommendation that will go directly to City Council, so.
Okay. No, that answered my question. Cool.
Other questions? No? Okay. We'll go ahead and close it out. I'll open it up. Comment from anyone?
Um, I, I will make a comment. I, I, in order to, to approve a PUD, there are certain requirements, criteria that need to be met per the Post Falls Municipal Code. And that's outlined here in our staff report. And I, and I can see that, and I see each of those items is addressed. What I, what I find, however, is, and most specifically in one and two, but I, I think throughout, the Condition One, or the Criteria One, being that it provides adequate utilities, and that would include sewer. I understand that there are, in the staff report, that it's, it's saying, yes, we, we can, right now, we believe that it would, the current setup with the, with the sewer and lift station and would, would be ample for what the PUD is, right? It would be ample at certain, at certain trigger points. Now, the way it was, it was fine. I don't think that there was anything in the current PUD that says that there's certain trigger points that need to be met on the development or, so how it is seems to be better than how it's proposed. Because how it's proposed seems to be pushing the sewer situation to, much closer to the trigger than by keeping it the way it is. And, and again, with the transportation network, the, it's outlined in here that the staff wants to see traffic studies done in certain areas, and, and I can understand that. However, what we currently have, we don't, what's currently approved doesn't need these transport, these traffic studies. And it seems that the transportation, that, that the traffic that is currently a part of the, the current PUD is going to be better than the proposed, because we're going to be putting a lot more units on it, a lot more, a lot more cars on it. And certainly, also, we don't have Highway forty-one finished yet. So I think what, what is, is approved right now is, seems to be working, and it looks like what they're asked, the amendments that they're asking for don't seem to be beneficial, in my opinion.
Okay. Other comment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make one. I do, I disagree with you, Mr. Bob Power, Bob Flowers. I think we still need, we're going to need more high-density. We have people moving in. I don't even know if it's a one percent vacancy. It's probably less than that right now. People can't get houses. So this is a project, or these type of projects are something we are really going to need and continue to need in the near future. But at the same time, I think in a development of PUD that's already established, and the homeowners that are in there have done their due diligence, and what's going to be there, what's going to be around them, I mean, they have no control of what's across the street or what's on the property next door to them. They can build whatever they want. They have no control over that. But I think if they've done their due diligence in their PUD that's already exists, to turn it around and change it is, I, I have an issue with that, and I see it happening a lot. I just, I think that we kind of owe it to the people that are in these developments to not be able to go in and completely change them around. And, and I mean, just, this is a big change, a lot of extra housing, a lot of extra traffic, a lot of extra everything. So that's kind of what I have my issue with.
Anyone else?
Yeah, same. Ryan? I, I like the bigger park. I, I agree with, with Vicky Joe in saying we, I think we do need multiple types of housing. I like the commercial, the CCM zoning over there. But, you know, this is an established PUD. Obviously, it hasn't built out exactly like it was, but I think, you know, needs change over the years, especially from two thousand and five and now. But this is a huge change, and I do have concerns, as Nancy pointed out, with Criteria One and Two, you know, the traffic and the sewer. There's just too many what-ifs questions at this time. It'd be seem like, hey, like, let's do the, if we hit this threshold, if we do this traffic study, we know forty-one's going to be built out. You know, maybe this is a, something we can look at in a year or two. Maybe they just need to stick with the PUD. That's my thoughts.
Anyone else?
I think that the, we all agree that we have a, a housing shortage, and, and things have changed a lot in whatever, fourteen or fifteen years. And we do need, do have a total lack of multifamily and affordable housing and for people in the workforce. And I think the city's done a pretty nice job of, of coming up with some conditions here to mitigate. I sympathize with the homeowner that feels like something's happening that they didn't buy onto. But ultimately, they, their property right is to, is to stay or buy somewhere else. The developer has the property right to do what they think is best for the, for themselves. And I think in general, that's going to be what provides the housing that we need in the area. And I think traffic is the, is the primary concern here. It sounds like they've totally addressed sewer services. I like Ryan's condition of getting Highway forty-one widening completed before issuing COs. And I think if the, with the city's input on the, on the major collector, I don't think it's going to be the impact that people believe it is. And I think it's going to solve, help solve our bigger problem of lack of housing.
Anything else to add?
No, sir.
Um, I mean, I threw that condition out with the understanding that it is going to be a period of time. Some say not too long, others say quite some time before forty-one is officially done. To me, it's the landowner's right. It's the, they absolutely have the ability to be able to come up and say, hey, this worked then, we feel like this is a better fit, so we're bringing it forth. I don't fault them for that at all. And I think having a condition to say there's no multifamily that, that's coming in until forty-one is completely finished, if the market changes and there's another hundred or five hundred or a thousand apartment complexes that come online before that happens, then they're going to come back and say, yeah, we, we don't want multifamily. So to me, that piece or that condition kind of helps take care of that. It's, I, I think sometimes we think, we're going to approve this, and in two weeks, there's going to be another twelve hundred or sixteen hundred vehicles on the roads. I don't see that happening. So to me, I don't see a, a huge issue in the sense of, they, they had an idea, they brought it forth, but times change, needs change, condition changes, and they're bringing forth a plan that I think if you extend that period of time could work. So if somebody wants to throw forth a motion...
I'd like to throw one forth, but I don't think I know how. This is a, this is a little more complicated. I could give it a try here, and Field, maybe you can tell me if it works. But I would move to recommend approval of RZDE zero-zero-zero-three dash two-zero-two-one and PUD zero-zero-zero-two two-zero-two-one. Adopting the findings and conclusions of the Conditions One through twelve, along with thirteen, as Ryan outlined, contained in the staff report.
I believe we'd need to... We'd also need to include the trigger point piece as well.
Yes. Yeah, there was a, there was Condition thirteen, which was the phasing of the PUD for the trigger points. And then there was Condition fourteen, which was the, limiting the issuance of COs prior to completion of Highway forty-one. Yeah, I, I looked through this, and it looked to me like item, Condition Four addressed utilities, being reviewed and approved by engineering. So I think that probably would cover us. But we could make it an additional Condition fourteen, that specifically we look at the trigger point for sewer flows at the Twelfth Street Lift Station. And when necessary, the developer contributes to the new, construction of the New Forest Main.
Okay.
How's that work?
I think we got there.
There's been a motion, looking for a second?
A second.
Okay. Call for vote?
Stephenson?
No.
Carey?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
No.
Okay. Field, correct me if I'm wrong, we've been in this position before, having six individuals at the commission. It is a three-three. Do we forward that on to city?
Well, I guess we, we need to also, and I should have caught this a second ago, but we should, we can certainly, we need to have two motions, one for the rezone, one for the PUD. I put them both in the same one. You put them both in the same one.
But we need to have two, so the initial should be the PUD followed by the zoning?
Yep. So, so we can, we can, we need to tackle those separately. Further, sorry. I would just, for the, both the recommendation to council and the PUD, you know, the commission is really tasked with providing a recommendation one way or another. So I would certainly have you explore what cri, you know, and really explain the criteria for that decision. Certainly, we can do a, a split recommendation, but it, it really isn't a recommendation. And so I would certainly urge you to recommend one way or another. I'd also like to point out that the code, as far as for planned unit developments, does allow for amendments to a PUD. And the approval procedure for these sort of material changes should be the same review and approval procedure for any PUD. And so you're really examining the same criteria under a new sort of overlay. But I just want to make that clear.
And this is the decision board for the PUD?
Yeah. So, and it is the, you are making the decision for the PUD. The zoning is a recommendation to council.
So that being said, Ross, you did good. We would need to start off with a motion specifically for the PUD. So I would throw that back out to you to see if anyone wants to bring forth a motion on the PUD to start with.
And so the city council won't be hearing the PUD?
No. No. This is the decision board for the PUD. That being said, there are appeals processes, so it may get appealed to city council. Okay, well, we'll try her one more time here and see if anything changes. I move to recommend approval of...
Just the PUD.
Just the PUD.
You're just, you're going to move to approve, not...
I'm going to move to approve. If I can find the file number here, I'll get back to it. Zone change file number PUD zero-zero-two-two-zero-two-one. Recommend adoption of the findings and conclusions of Conditions One through fourteen, as we outlined a minute ago, contained in the staff report.
There's been a motion to adopt the PUD amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Call for vote?
Stephenson?
No.
Carey?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
No.
Field, we could be here all night long, and we will be if necessary.
Well, I would, I would have the chair probably go down the line, and for the commissioners who are, have voted no, it would be good to get a recommendation on what, what sort of conditions could be included in order for them to get approval. So a lot of times in our reasoned decisions, we will let the applicant know what sort of changes they could make in order, in order to get approval. And so that would be helpful information for drafting.
Absolutely. So we'll start on my left, Mr.?
Or include as a condition tonight also, I suppose.
Perhaps.
Mr. Stephenson?
Yeah, as I said before, my concern is Criteria One and Two, which is the, provides adequate utility services, parking for the proposed development, and the transportation network. I just think there's too many what-ifs right now. I just think there's too many what-ifs right now. You know, I think it does help, I understand that, you know, we approved this. You know, 400 apartments are not going up tomorrow, and I know that. And it will probably be a year or two. But I just think there's too many what-ifs. And with the sewer, Rob was talking. The lift station is in good condition, but there was some other work that would take another 18, 18 months or so to work on. And say, the trigger point doesn't get hit until 12 months, but then they're already building, and then there's still another 18 months. So those are my concerns.
I have those same concerns, and also I have concerns with the density. I just think for that, that much density that quickly in that area is just too much.
Mr. Hampi?
Oh, I agree. I have concerns with the, with 1 and 2, the traffic, the sewer. It was, it was said that, you know, that if we have enough money, if the city has enough money at the time that these triggers are made, then they'll move forward with X, Y, and Z. And there's too many, too many question marks in if they have enough money, when they'll have enough money, how they're going to get the money. I just, I don't think those are adequate answers.
So it sounds like the consensus between half of the commission is that, in essence, it's fine as it currently stands?
Yes.
Duly noted.
Yep, so there, it didn't pass by a majority, so it's an effective denial, basically.
Okay, and in regard to zoning, it, in essence, took care of itself. There's no need to bring up a motion for denial of zoning, correct?
You could still consider the underlying zoning. So I would make a motion to either approve or deny the underlying zoning. That is a recommendation that will go on to council, so.
And that recommendation, if it so happened to be split 3-3, would we need to go through again and describe denial? Or can we leave that in a more generic state?
I would still probably explain the denial for, with the split motion.
But would the change in zoning fit? They've already got the approval to proceed with the PUD as originally planned. If we change the zoning now, does that screw that up? So maybe we just leave that alone for now until they...
Or make a motion for denial. If everyone feels that it's not, it's not the right fit for this current time, then we would need to make a motion for denial. That would go forward to city council, city council. In essence, C, the PUD was denied because lack of majority, and that the zoning was denied as well. So does somebody want to make a motion towards zoning?
Okay, I will. I recommend to, I move to recommend denial of zone change RZNE-0003-2021. Finding that it does not meet the approval criteria as outlined in the Post Falls Municipal Code.
There's been a motion, looking for a second?
Second.
Call for vote?
Hampi?
So I'm voting to, yes.
I was going to say, yeah.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Okay, so move forward to city council for review. We are 55 minutes into basically this, but I know we had conversation with our fine folks at the Post Falls Police Department to take just a few minutes to allow individuals to exit and other individuals to come in, specifically dealing with the Crown Enterprise. So we are going to take three quick minutes. What's that?
I was one of them.
You were one of them?
Yeah.
My clock must be off. All right, we are back into it. Go ahead and open up public hearing, Crown Enterprise's special use permit.
Good evening, Commissioners. Laura Jones, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls, introducing you to the Crown Enterprises' special use permit. The owner and the applicant is Crown Enterprises Incorporated. And the requested action tonight is to approve a construction, or approval for a construct, excuse me, long day already, special use permit approval to construct a general commodities freight terminal with an office, fleet maintenance shop, and fueling station on approximately 15.98 acres within the community commercial services zone. The project is located north of West Expo Parkway, east of Beck Road, and south of Jaclyn. The adjacent zoning, so current zoning on the property is community commercial services, as mentioned. To the north is also community commercial services with the Remington Apartments built out on it currently and undergoing further construction. To the east is the R1 Woodbridge South subdivision of single-family homes. To the south is CCS-zoned UPS distribution center. And then to the west is CCS-zoned Parkway Place Apartments, which is partly built out, partly under construction still. And then there is one industrial property right here on the west, which is a Kootenay Electric substation. The water provider is East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the City of Post Falls will provide the sewer. The future land use designation called out in the comprehensive plan is business commercial. The business commercial should provide for a wide variety of general service, retail, professional office, light industrial, artisan manufacturing, and mixed uses that serve local and regional residents, as well as the traveling public. This is the project description. Again, general commodities freight terminal with office, shop, and fueling station. This building on the south is the proposed shop. There's a small office here on the west side, and then a 52-door terminal in brown here. And this is a two-phase project. This is proposed in phase one. Phase two, you can see moves towards the eastern portion of the property with an additional 68-door terminal extension onto that phase one terminal. Truck access will be coming off of Expo Parkway at these two entrances. And then light vehicular access will come off of Beck Road. And this is a preliminary plan. Staff may have recommendation for revisions when it gets to a site plan review if approved. Staff looks at four criteria for a special use permit, the first being implementation of the special use will or will not conform to the purpose of the applicable zoning designation. The CCS zone supports uses that include retail sales or performance of consumer services, and permits a variety of retail, professional, and service businesses, including some manufacturing, technical, or other professional uses. The proposed development would fall under the service uses, as outlined in the CCS zone, and would be primarily used again for shipping and receiving. Second, special use criteria is whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use as established by the chapter of the zoning district involved and complies with all other applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations within the city and state. The Post Falls Municipal Code and the zoning ordinance have established the transit warehouse and truck terminals as an allowable use within the community commercial services zoning designation with the approval of the special use permit. And at the time of site plan review, the applicant will be required to meet all local, state, and federal requirements, including building and fire codes. Third review criteria is whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety, and welfare of the public or with the land uses in the vicinity. This area has developed since the first special use permit was approved for this truck terminal back in 2018. The reason they're reapplying is that permit expired because they did not start construction. So that's why we're back here tonight. At the time, there were not apartments in place. Now there are, so that does potentially show some incompatibility. The Post Falls Municipal Code does address incompatible uses with the use of the landscape buffer. And as shown in the table, which is from the Post Falls Municipal Code, between industrial and residential is buffer C, which requires a 25-foot buffer between the two incompatible uses. And that is how we would require them to mitigate the incompatibility. And this slide shows the R1 subdivision here on that east side. That's where they would be required for that 25-foot buffer. There are residential uses on the east and the north with the apartment complexes, although they would not be required to put a buffer in place because they're not directly adjacent. They're adjacent to Wright of Way, which we do not require a buffer for. As far as transportation, we do not anticipate an adverse impact on the adjoining transportation system. Beck Road is classified as a minor arterial, which gives signalized access to Saltese Way, which is the principal arterial, and Interstate 90 via Point Parkway. And the site also has access to Expo Parkway, which is the major collector, and the truck's primary access point for the site. The water reclamation and domestic water, staff has determined that the existing facilities have the capacity and capability to provide necessary service to the proposed use. And lastly, staff looks at whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. There are two relevant goals that are out of the comprehensive plan, and they are to grow and sustain a balanced, resilient economy for Post Falls, providing a community, providing community prosperity and fiscal health. That was goal one. And goal seven is to plan for and establish types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. So in trying to achieve these goals, the comprehensive plan outlines policies that are implemented to obtain these goals. So the relevant policies out of the comprehensive plan for the special use permit are policy one, and that is to support land use patterns. And the criteria is listed there. But the proposed development could provide jobs and services to the residents of Post Falls. In turn, fiscal health of the community and the residential quality of life may benefit. Additionally, river bend focus area is outlined in the comprehensive plan as the focus area for this area. And there is an industrial precedent within that focus area, which would support the special use. Policy eight is to encourage compatible infill development and redevelopment of vacant and underutilized properties within the city limits. This is, of course, an infill lot. It's surrounded by developed properties. It would be a good infill lot. Policy 11 addresses the location of new industrial development. And as previously indicated, the existing transportation network can handle the capacity of the proposed use. And it's in relative proximity to other industrial uses. Policy 12, ensure new industrial uses, excuse me, ensure new industrial uses near residential areas do not create noise, odor, air, or visual pollution beyond that normally associated with other residential uses. As I mentioned earlier, we will be requiring a 25-foot buffer between incompatible industrial and residential... between incompatible industrial and residential uses, which will act as a visual barrier. And right now, it's unknown how the applicant will mitigate the noise, odor, or air pollution. So maybe that's something they can elaborate on. The last policy that is relevant for this project looks at the local business community, and the proposed transit warehouse, or, excuse me, transit warehouse truck terminal could help existing local businesses expand their supply chains as well as offer potential new jobs to the residents of Post Falls. And with the river bend focus area, the variety of uses in that whole area could be considered a business or mixed-use campus. This is the list of agencies that were routed for review and comment. Of those four responded, the Post Falls Police Department, Post Falls Highway District, and Kootenay County Fire and Rescue were all neutral. And the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality gave general comments that are applicable at the time of construction. I can take any questions.
I did have one question. On the map, it shows that to the west and to the north, there is that 25-foot landscape buffer.
Which map are you on?
It was actually on the map. It was in, there was one that was in the packet. It was just basically the proposed truck terminal. But I'm only seeing landscape buffer on the north and the west. We're talking about that we need to put it on the east side as well, correct?
It would be required on the east. The former special use permit, I believe, required it on the north and the east and not on the west. The applicant has made application for a site plan review, which can't move forward until they get approval. But they have submitted documents for that, so that might be what you're looking at.
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
Ryan, which, which map are you looking at?
Page 98.
When you say river bend is, is a mixed use, I think of south of I-90. Is this area north of I-90? Is it Expo or River Bend?
It's actually River Bend. Oh, well, River Bend goes almost up to Seltice, actually, and I'm not sure how far east it goes, but it's, it's a large focus area. So River Bend, a lot of people think of that industrial area south of the interstate, but per the comprehensive plan, it does go north of the interstate.
Other questions for staff?
I, I do have a question. I don't know if it would be you or I would need to talk to the applicant. When it says fueling station, okay, does this mean there's going to be gas there and there's going to have to be tanks?
I will let the applicant answer that. That was what was included in their narrative, although I do not see it on the site plan, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for staff?
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure out this map because it's... So this one, this map on 98, page 98 that we have in our packet.
Go like this.
And then it turns.
It turns. It doesn't work.
It's the proposed, it's the conceptual site plan, is what it is.
Okay, and is it the same?
I think it's this one.
Okay, it should be this.
Yeah, that one.
Okay.
So on the right-hand side, we would have the 25-foot, because that's next to Woodbridge. And then the six-foot-high berm on the north part. Is that correct? That would, that, I mean, that's what it says on here, please.
It says green wall, so I will let the applicant address that. It's not a requirement by code. The only requirement for buffering will be on the east, excuse, yes, the east side. So the applicants may have put that to help mitigate that incompatibility, but I'll let them address it since it's not a requirement of our code.
Yeah, the previous SUP required a brick wall to mitigate noise infiltrating to the north, if I remember correctly.
I remember that conversation. Okay, cool.
Any other questions? Answered your mic. Oh. Okay, thank you very much. We'll invite the applicant up.
Yeah, James, I'm with you. Two maps, different.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is John Nix, Portfolio Manager and tonight's representative with Crown Enterprises. Tonight, via Zoom, we have my colleagues Dennis Schrebus, Senior Director of Real Estate, Dan Anifer, Director of Construction and Land Use, fellow Portfolio Manager Edward Juradat, and with me in person here tonight is Elizabeth Tellison, who is our acting counsel. A little bit about Crown before I move forward. Just to give you an overview, we're a fourth-generation, family-owned real estate firm, sharing ownership with a number of logistics and trucking companies, two of which are publicly traded companies on the NASDAQ. Together with our affiliates, we own and operate properties in 45 states across the country, in Canada, and in Mexico. Not only acting as landlord to only our affiliates, but also multiple large public companies, the likes of Amazon, FCA, Walmart, just to name a few. So just a little bit about Crown before we get into the agenda tonight. This first site plan, as some of you may have seen, some of you may not have, is from 2019. This was the original plan that was conditionally approved at that point. Conditioned based on a few things that have already been mentioned in regards to the landscape buffering, location of the shop, and also the ingress and egress regarding truck traffic. Moving forward to the updated current plan that we're presenting this evening, we feel that we've addressed these requirements and also mitigated these concerns with this plan. Adding the landscape buffering required, that I'm going to let my colleague Dan Anifer get into detail in a couple of slides here. But we, we went ahead and enhanced that and added what was required there. Relocated the shop portion of this from the northern portion of the property to the southern, kind of furthering that from the residential development across Jaclyn there. And of course, relocating the ingress and egress off of back to Expo. As a whole, the site plan is, what you're looking at here is, is a terminal building that consists of 3,100 square feet of office space. As mentioned, 52, a 52-door cross-dock transfer, transfer terminal, and a 12,000-square-foot shop with diesel fuel canopy. These structures are all situated in such a way that will allow for an additional 87 parking spots for 53-foot trailers, approximately 30 spots for fleet tractors, and 11 spots for triple-box trailers as well. So before Dan gets into a little bit more about the landscape buffering and what we've done there, I did want to bring to the Commissioners here an example that, of a property we have in Santa Fe Springs. And the reason I feel it's important, I'll kind of toggle back and forth here from this photo, is that we're in a similar situation here with this development being right across the street from a residential development. Now, while we didn't develop this terminal, we acquired it in 2009, we do know that this residential development predated the terminal development. And the reason I'm bringing that up and the point that I want to make is that since 2009, when Central Transport took over as the operating tenant here, who would be the tenant here in Post Falls, there has not been one complaint from any of the surrounding neighbors being noise or otherwise. So I think that's important to mention, that we've experienced this in other areas of the country, and we've dealt with it, and we've dealt with it successfully. And I think we can, it shows that we can coexist with these different developments surrounding our, our products. So with that being said, I want to, I want to give it to Dan Anifer via Zoom to go over the landscape buffer illustrations. Dan, are you?
Thank you, John. Can you hear me all right?
Yep. You just tell me when you want me to switch.
Okay, thank, thank you, John. Good evening, Commission. And as John mentioned, we are proposing as part of this development landscape buffers on both the east property line, which is shown on the right-hand side of the screen, and the north property line. And what we're proposing, as mentioned by staff, the buffer on the north property line is additional to any ordinance requirements, but it is consistent with the previous special use permit that Commission supported, I think, in 2019. And if we can go to the next slide, we'll show details. This is a detail of the north proposed buffer. You can see Jaclyn Road, and then there would be the, the strip of green between the public sidewalk and the pavement at Jaclyn Road. And then from the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the, the black, heavy black line is a six-foot solid screen wall. But between that is a 25-foot landscape buffer that's, with the plantings consistent with a, as if it was a contiguous residential property. And also, you can't really see it, but there's contours showing that there is some, there's elevation change between the sidewalk and the proposed screen wall, with the screen wall being at the top of that elevation to give it additional height in that screening. And then, working towards the bottom of the screen, there's an additional 10 feet of, of buffer, unpaved area between the screen wall and the edge of the pavement where the trailer parking would be located. If we go to the next slide, it shows the somewhat similar buffer on the east property line. You can see the, hugging the east property line is a 25-foot easement. And the buffer is shown clear of that easement. So in effect, we've got 50 feet of what amounts to landscape with the 25 feet closer to our development being planted. And again, there's the solid screen wall, six-foot-high screen wall. So what we're proposing in the landscaping is, again, this is, what we're looking at here is consistent with the ordinance for the residential that is contiguous to this east property line with the addition of this 20, additional 25-foot buffer, which expands this to a 50-foot width. So hopefully that answers the questions regarding the landscape buffer. And John, if you can take to the next slide?
Yep, thanks, Dan.
And we, we feel it's important to take this opportunity to really talk about exactly what we're proposing operations-wise. On the construction side, we're looking at approximately a $10 million construction investment. But as John mentioned, this is a, what we term a cross-dock facility. It's part of a network that is, a tenant is a related company of Crown's, and they're a common carrier. And they provide a service out of this facility that, that service is mostly, it's customer-oriented. The customers are within the Post Falls market. And also, freight from this facility is moved to other locations, similar locations within the network that expands across the contiguous U.S. So point being that there's a lot of service provided from this facility, but the service is provided to the customers, and the customers are on the road. And the activity at this property consists of the tractors. As John mentioned, there's a parking for fleet tractors, and those tractors hook to a loaded trailer, and they're out the gate. And most of their day is spent on the road servicing customers. Same thing with the highway drivers. They will take a load sometime late afternoon or the evening and drive approximately halfway to another facility in the network, change trailers with another driver from the other facility, and that driver returns back to his home base. So all of the tenants' drivers are home at the end of their shift. And the tenant is looking to create about 30 jobs at this facility. And there was mention of the, the fuel. This would be a diesel fuel, and it would strictly be for the tenants' fleet equipment. As I said, there would be tractor trailers down in Syle here, and they would fuel here, hook to their loaded trailer, and they're out, out the gate to service the customer. We can go to the next slide. This is a similar terminal that we recently built in, in the Minneapolis market. And this was something that we were very proud of. It's, it's something that we put a big effort into convincing the local community of the product that we can do and the service that our tenant can provide. And reasons, we, one reason we can say we're proud of it is that after convincing the, the community of what we could do, we had to deliver. And about six months after we completed the project, our local attorney sent me an email that we quoted here, that, that the mayor and city manager were very pleased with, with the product that we provided. And we've been a good member of the Blaine community ever since.
Thanks, Dan.
So with that, I think we can turn it over to John or Elizabeth to wrap things up.
Elizabeth, just so you know, you have two minutes and 15. Okay.
Yes, I saw that. I will do my very best to not repeat much of the staff report. As Laura said, you know, the standards for approving the SUP are established here. This is a permitted use, subject to whatever conditions might be imposed. The comprehensive plan, goals and policies for this particular area relate to this commercial, mixed-use, existing industrial development. And this contributes to that mix. As Dan was saying, these are short haul routes for many city drivers, for a lot of local deliveries related to e-commerce. These aren't long haul routes that are coming here and then dispersing far beyond the reaches of our regional community. So in that regard, you know, the street and traffic level of service are capable of supporting this use. One note on the site plan, you'll notice that there's a dedicated in and a dedicated out shown on that site plan. And coming out, there will be only right turns onto Expo Road. There is no intent for this traffic to go to Love's. As we mentioned, there's an onsite fuel system, so that these trucks and tractors are fueled up onsite, hit Beck Road, and either hit Seltice or Prairie View onto I-90. So there is really no hesitation for, or reason to hesitate about there being truck traffic going east towards the single-family development. As we mentioned, the noise buffer, you know, the standard legislative fix to that are the buffers, the 25-foot with a screen wall. This is, in the immediate adjacency, going to be 50 plus a wall, plus there's going to be some additional distance from the actual use. The equipment, as you saw on site and with Dan and John's comment, is regularly updated with... with all the standard emissions of those types of vehicles, and we will, of course, follow whatever requirements are imposed at the building permit stage by DEQ and the other agencies. So with that, time is up, but if you have questions for us, we're happy to answer whatever you might have.
I have a quick question. So your exits are going to be onto Expo Parkway?
Yeah, let's go back there.
To turn then onto Beck to get to the freeway or whichever direction, right?
Correct.
You'll have no other exits out?
Correct. So it's just the, the western entrance in and the eastern en, or flip that, eastern entrance in and the western entrance out.
Okay, and then can you explain to me the, the fuel storage and how you would mitigate any odors from the fuel or anything like that for the neighborhood?
I would like to turn that over to Dan, since he's kind of the operations guy, if Dan could answer that question for you probably more directly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I can. Yes, this is a, it would be an underground diesel tank, and you can see that the canopy is located on the north side of the maintenance shaft. So it's, it's mostly screened from the road.
Okay.
And this is fueling for just the, the fleet tractors. It's, it's not a high-traffic, you know, commercial fueling facility.
So it's just like a one-pump type of a thing? Pull up, get your gas and leave, or your diesel?
Yeah, it, it may have two lanes, but yeah, the two lanes would be located between the shop and the, there's trailer parking immediately north of those fuel lanes, so the, the fueling is mostly screened by the, the shop and the, and the trailers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for applicant?
Yeah, just a quick question. I think you addressed like the noise and the air pollution. What about any type of lighting pollution? I know, I mean, it looks like most of the trucks run during the day, or they're gone in the afternoon, not coming back. Obviously, we have the buffers to the north and east. Is there any other mitigation factors you guys put in as far as lights go?
I'll leave that to Dan as well.
And, and the lighting would be compliant with Sydney, city ordinances for cutoff lighting to minimize and eliminate any lighting that, to spill over the property lines, which is typical of, of most lighting requirements.
Did you mean truck li, the truck lights?
Well, I mean, you could say truck light, but I mean, if, if they're going to be back in the afternoon, of course, you know, in the winter, it's dark here by 3:30. But I was more meaning building lights or parking or any lots, lot lights around there.
So it sounds like they'd be compliant.
But it does, yeah. If it's going to follow the code and not spill over, and then obviously we have the buffers.
Is this a 24-hour-use facility?
That is the operational standard. The activity, and Dan can certainly supplement this, is anticipated to be kind of heavy in the morning as trucks come in, get loaded, and then leave, and then returning in the afternoon before that evening rush typically hits. So there might be trucks that come in outside of those windows, so there will be staff most likely onsite, but large, the large focus of the traffic in and out will be in the morning and kind of off-peak hours, just before peak in the morning and before the evening peak returning.
Thank you.
And just one other, to the extent you guys haven't maybe been by the site recently, the topography, as you kind of go up towards Jaclyn, rises, and so the, the light kind of imposition and leaving the site is less likely to be, I think, an impact on the neighbors, one due to distance and two due to the topography. In addition, there's an existing site obscuring fence around all of the single-family, and so we think that will further help any intrusion that could potentially exist.
Other questions? Not at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Public comment, in favor?
None.
Neutral?
None.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is it Michael Racy?
Would implementation of proposed special use permit conform with the zoning district? Yes. The CCS zone supports the use for performance, performance of consumer services, considering the rise of e-commerce during the last year of the pandemic. Situating these type of logistic-based facilities in close proximity to residential areas makes sense. I'm guessing that this individual is in favor. Is the request of special use and zoning district comply? Yes. Refer to Post Falls 18 dot 20 dot 030. The proposed use is permitted within the SUP and the land use table. In short, this is the type of use that's been contemplated for this parcel location. Will the proposed special use permit be compatible with health, safety, welfare? Yes. The recent construction of the UPS facility on the southeast corner of Beck and Expo is a testament to the trend in locating logistic facilities in close proximity to residential neighborhoods. Situating another facility in the same area improves shipping time, lowers costs to consumer, consumers, and though the promotion of the, lower the competing prices. The conceptual site indicates the use of screen walls in lieu of a chain fence, as well as landscape buffers to provide aesthetically pleasing view to the residential neighbors. Will the proposed special use comply with the goals and policies? Yes. Our learned behaviors now include ordering things online and wanting those items delivered right to our door within a few days. The proposed development helps feed this habit. I would have to believe that heavy truck traffic would be to and from I-90 along Beck and Point Parkway. I support new construction, new jobs, and both of these comply with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. We have a comment. Crown plans will devalue the property values of our subdivision, along with adding noise and traffic. We strongly, next one, Leslie Marlowe. We strongly oppose putting in another truck stop in our neighborhood, Woodbridge South. We already have a Flying J and a Love's in a high-traffic area, already overabundance of trucks in our area. Our community is filled with families and families with children. We want to, our children to play and for our families to continue to walk through our neighborhood without concerning themselves with semi-trucks rolling through our streets. Bringing in a truck stop will decrease our property values, which no one in this community wants. We are begging the city not to push through this agenda. Find another area that would not be family-oriented. Neighborhood, perhaps, an industrial area would be a better place and a solution. Yvonne Zagargan says, my family and I are strongly opposed to the Crown Point Truck Terminal proposal, or house backs onto Jaclyn Road. We already see large trucks with semi-trucks used in this route as it's on its way to Love's Travel Stop. With addition of truck terminals, we are concerned that there will be drastic increase in traffic along this route, resulting in us no longer getting the same enjoyment and use of our backyard area. Just this past winter, there were individuals who crashed behind the house and took down the tree right behind our fence. The individual could have easily came crashing through our back fence and into our yard, potentially hurting us or our children. Our concerns are that the traffic, increase in traffic, especially large vehicles, incidents like this will happen far more often, and they could have serious impact on not only the quality of light, but also our neighbors. Thank you for your time and consideration. In regards to Crown Enterprises, Antonio Aguilar, would implementing the proposed special use permit conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district? No. Is the requested special use allowance applicable in the zoning district? No. Will there be special use to, will the proposed special use be compatible with health, safety, and welfare of public or with land in the vicinity of the proposal? No. Will the proposed special use comply with the goals and policies in the comp plan? No. Jessica Morton says, would the implementation of the special use permit be an applicable zoning district? Says, I cannot answer. Is the requested special use allowable within the applicable zone district? And the special use comply with all the applicable laws? It says yes. Comment says, I cannot answer. Will the proposed special use be compatible with health, safety, and welfare of the public? No. And the last one, will the proposed use comply with goals and policies in the comp plan? I cannot answer. William Fletcher says that would the implementation fit the zone? No. The area is retail, manufacturing, residential. 24/7 truck depot does not fit in at all. Is requested special use allowable on the zoning district? And does the special use comply with laws? No. The purpose of the CCS zone is to support residential retail and services. This is not a service in, to the residential area. It is not a service to anyone other than the company that owns the trucking fleet. Well, will the proposed special use permit be compatible with health, safety, and public welfare? No. Majority of the area is residential or commercial. Traffic flows are during business hours. This would be a 24-hour operation, which does not comply with the current use, and would be detrimental to traffic flows on the public as well as sound pollution. And will the special use permit meet the goals of the comp plan? No. Our goal of the plan is to support community needs. Low-impact manufacturing, retail, and other use would help the economy and the neighborhood. Local shopping would be helpful, but the truck depot would have a negative impact as the noise and traffic congestion is a 24-hour basis would not. Under evaluation, approval criteria of Section D, it states that a warehouse, truck terminal may contribute to the fiscal health of the community and provide jobs. I feel that the minimal gain does not overshadow the, overshadow the negative impacts. This would never have been allowed by a planning commission, should have never been allowed in the, by a planning commission in the first place. It is not the best location when connected to other uses which have been allowed in this area. Do we have any others? Okay. Would the applicants like time for rebuttal in any capacity? Please come on up.
Dan, did you want to start?
Yes, I can make a few comments. I believe there, there was, one of the remonstrators mentioned and characterized this as a truck stop. And again, that, that's something that we, we commonly encounter, and, and that's why we, we tried to describe as best we could the nature of the service being provided from this facility, in that it, it's not a truck stop, and most of the activity is on the road as the trucks are pulling the trailers to service their customers. Activity on the property is limited to on the cross-dock. These are electric vehicles moving freight from an inbound trailer to an outbound trailer. So that's a lot of the activity that we see on the property itself. And again, those are, those are all EVs moving that freight. Now, with regard to traffic, as Elizabeth pointed out, there's, the, the flow of traffic on, on the property is something that we're very careful with. And we saw that the inbound traffic is on the Eastern Drive with the Western Drive being the outbound traffic. And because of the proximity of that driveway to, to Beck Road, it, it, for that reason, there, it, it isn't possible to make a left turn out of that outbound drive that you see in the southeast corner of the site, because you can see, if, if you tried to make a left turn, you would have to cross the left turn lane that is for the traffic queuing on Expo to turn left onto Beck Road. So because of that geometry, the outbound traffic must turn right onto Beck Road. And John, if you've got something to add to that?
No, I, I echo what Dan stated. It's the term truck stop, that's just not what this is. The trucks are not in and out at all hours of the evening. You know, just like Dan mentioned, they're in and out in the morning, they're back early afternoon, highway drivers go out, they're back, and, you know, it's, the fuel is not a public gas pump. There's not going to be, you know, it's just for the tenant's use only. And the majority of the work that goes on in the, in the late evening hours is done within the, the cross-dock or in the shop, so we feel that we've presented here some, some good ways to mitigate those concerns of the residents.
Okay, any other questions while the applicants are up? Nope?
Would you again explain to me the highway drivers? When would they be returning?
Highway drivers, they load out in the afternoon and come back the following morning.
So there'd be a port, part of morning step?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, questions for staff? Anyone? Rob is sitting there eager to jump up. Okay? Nothing else? Going once? Okay, we'll go ahead and close it out. I'll open it up for comment. Anybody have thoughts? I know you all have thoughts. Who wants to share them?
My only, my only thought is, I think, I think it is a good spot for the truck traffic, and it is a mixed-use area. I, but there is a, there are a lot of, I don't think the residences along Jaclyn are going to be an issue, but the, the people to the east, and then we have the new apartment complex. I don't remember 500 units going to the southeast of them, and so it would be nice if the truck traffic was as close to Beck Road as possible and stayed further away from this. So I don't know if we could put a condition in limiting the, the driveways and keeping them, you know, within 150 yards of Beck Road, maybe, to keep the truck traffic as far away from the residential areas that are immediately to the east. But that would be my only thought.
Anyone else?
I think, you know, I was reading through this narrative. The only difference between this proposal and the one that we approved in 2019 is the ingress EGS is now an Expo versus Beck, and then the, the plan, the layout is different.
Say better or worse layout this time?
I think it's better, because you're getting farther away from Woodbridge South, and then you get the buffer in there. If I remember, I'd have to go look at the other one, but. And I know last time we had lots of discussion about the buffer and berms and walls and trees and everything, so I'm happy to see that that's included, and I think that will if this turns out to be anything like the pictures, which I'm sure it will, because we have the conditions in there.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I appreciate, appreciate some of the notes. Obviously, it does talk about in the later evening hours that most of that stuff will take place within the warehouse. I just took a 1,450-mile U-Haul trip and spent a lot of time getting fuel at truck stops and spending a lot of time next to semis, which I've grown to have a great deal of respect for the drivers. And what I have found is, growing up as a child off of Highway 95 near Grade, the compression or what we used to call Jake Brakes, as the logging trucks would go down the highway and, you know, wake you up at all hours of the night, trucks have advanced significantly. It's not, you know, allowed noisy, constant smell of black rolling diesel. I think that, you know, they have obviously made the commitment that they are going to continue to work with the pollution from the large trucks and noise as well. So I feel like it's, I feel like it's a good fit. I feel like it was a good fit the first time as well. So if nobody else has any comment, I would look for someone to make a motion, one direction or another, at this time.
I'll do it. I move to a Uh, I move to approve Crown Enterprises Special Use Permit, file name, U S E zero zero two twenty twenty-one, and adopting the, the findings and conclusions and conditions, uh, contained in the staff report.
I'll second.
Been a motion or second call for vote?
Stephenson.
Yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Slahower.
Yes.
Campy.
Yes.
So moved. I believe our public safety officer, do we need to, uh, take another minute to, to clear things out and switch things or can we roll into the next one?
This is everybody.
This is everybody. You're all with us for the long haul and I thank you for that. All right, then we'll go ahead and open up the Pleasant View Annexation File, A N N X dash zero 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 eight dash two zero one. Two zero two one, I guess that would be the right year.
I did it.
Nice work. Good job.
C S, John Manley, Planning Manager here at the City Post Falls. But not quite. There we go. It's working.
Little help from the back, I'm thinking?
Yeah. So, uh, yes, Pleasant View North Annexation Case File, A N N X eight, two thousand twenty-one. Once again, that's, don't celebrate too soon. The owners are Exhibit A one. Um, that's the school property that's part of this proposal. And there's also Exhibit A two that was in your staff report that had a list of multiple owners on that. Oftentimes, when you have a list of multiple owners, the City Post Falls is the applicant and represents that for group type affairs. And this one here also is part of a urban renewal district that's being established too, that also kind of warrants the city representing the collective group as well. So what the, what we're looking for, for is a recommendation for a mix of different zoning designations that I'll go into as part of this annexation request for approximately three hundred and seventy-one point five four acres. The annexation location, as you see here, the majority and the bulk of it is northeast of Prairie Avenue and Pleasant View. There are some remnants you see there in the red hatch that's, um, contiguous with a prior annexation that, uh, would go along with this proposal. So what's being requested is the C C M mix, seventy-two acres of this property. There'll be a detail later that's showing where those are at. And then there's the five acres of C C S, Community Commercial Services. There's eighty-seven acres of residential mixed and the public reserve, that's the school site, sixty-six acres with the various industrial sites summing to a hundred and twenty-four. Note that the C C M districts, the mixed zoning districts, do require a development agreement to be approved by city council prior to development. What you see here is the distribution map of where these zoning districts are being proposed. You can see the school site, that's the green, the yellow being the residential mixed, the, um, gray with the hatch, those are the industrials. There's two reds, the one north of Prairie Avenue is that community commercial mixed with that C C S being further to the south. You also can see the county lands to the west and to the east. And the light yellow is the, uh, residential suburban low density, uh, one acre lots in the City Post Falls with the other R one properties being yellow and the purple being the smart code properties a little bit further to the east, significantly to the east. Both water and sewer are provided by the City Post Falls or would be provided to this area by the City Post Falls. So you're looking at the zone change criteria. You're looking at consistent with the future land use map, consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. Once again, we're looking at, is the proposed zone consistent with the policies and the future land use map? We're also looking at, is the proposed zoning, uh, assigned following considerations as the street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans and geographic and natural features, all of which to encourage a balance of land uses in Post Falls. So I'll get into a lot of the other comprehensive plan details and stuff. Rob and I talked about that. I think I'm going to call him up to kind of address the traffic patterns, street classification and utilities part of the staff report that dealt with some of those goals and policies.
I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding your map. What's included?
Okay, thank you.
Where's the line?
Thank you. So the line here is the periphery boundary right here. This is the annexation. I'll go back to the annexation map. This is the zoning. So what you see in a red?
Yeah.
Is the proposed annexation areas. What you see in black just to the south of this, which is contiguous to the proposed area, has been recently approved, uh, by the city council to be annexed. So this is a follow-up annexation proposal contiguous with the decision already rendered to annex on areas, uh, before. The map that you see here is a collective map showing all the zoning being how they kind of come together with the, uh, community commercial mix, the residential mix, industrial, the industrial that was approved prior. And so this just kind of looks at how they kind of work together.
So the, the gray down there on the left is existing industrial and the hatched is new?
Yeah, the hatch, that would be new and then this would be new as well, industrial to coincide with the prior decision rendered.
Why didn't this come in with that?
Uh, timing, you know, owners going out and your, people are, are you interested or you're not interested? You know, they're kind of like hearing things. This right here, it coincided with this application. And so instead of holding up the prior, um, item that was already prepped and ready to go, it did fall in line with a slot for this to go along with this.
Okay. And Mr. Manley, you said this is a proposed U R D?
Yeah, this, um, yeah, there's a U R D being proposed for this entire. And if there are questions specific to the U R D, I would have Bob Seals here and he can answer a lot of those U R D questions.
I don't think there's anything specific. Just wanted to co- uh, confirm that.
Okay. So, all right.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. So for transportation in this area, we have, uh, two principal arterial roadways. One would be, uh, Prairie Avenue, which runs east-west along the southern boundary. And then we also have Pleasant View Road, which is a principal arterial roadway. Those roads would both have the same type or both have a hundred and ten foot right-of-way dedications and we would be taking in the entire rights of way. There was a, uh, letter to you from Post Falls Highway District wanting to make sure that when the city takes in, um, rights of way, that we take in the entire roadway just for consistency of maintenance. As you get to the, uh, Maguire Road, Maguire Road is a, uh, minor arterial roadway. And then down to the south where you have these other pieces, Pole Line Avenue in this area is identified as a major collector roadway. And then Yukon Avenue, which is down here on the far south end next to the industrial area, that is classified as a local roadway. We would be seeing that as being dedicated more as a commercial, uh, local road due to the industrial type use on that. One thing to note, when we did have the previous, um, annexation moving forward on the stuff on the south, uh, we had also mentioned at that time that Pleasant View Road, uh, being a critical arterial corridor by the Kootenay Metropolitan Planning Organization, that means that that road along with Prairie Avenue that has the same designation, these are roadways that regionally play a significant role in moving traffic east-west or north-south. The Idaho Transportation Department does have a project planned for Pleasant View Road and State Highway fifty-three to create a overpass so that traffic from Pleasant View Road would go over the railroad tracks and then utilize a interchange to get on and off of State Highway fifty-three. That is, um, planned to get started in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six with current planning and dollar availability at the state level, though I am aware that the state is also pursuing several, several, um, grant opportunities to see if they can't push that through at a earlier date. But again, on the state plan right now, it is geared for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six for the start of construction. John had mentioned that there is the potential, we're trying to form an urban renewal in this area if it is annexed in. With that urban renewal plan, they would identify a lot of the improvements that would, that could be covered by the Urban Renewal District towards the roadways. Any questions on, uh, transportation at this point?
No.
So good. Go ahead.
Uh, in terms of utilities, right now, both the proposed area as well as the area that was recently annexed in, it's a, it's a blank slate. Utilities are not in place yet. However, we do have our master plans that do show how the utilities would go in. Uh, the city has been working with a consultant to identify phasing as to how those improvements could be constructed as growth occurs and with available dollars from urban renewal if urban renewal was to be a participant in moving those projects forward. And it is very likely that urban renewal will be doing that. The plans do call for a, a regional lift station up near the intersection of Prairie Avenue and Pleasant View that would ultimately, um, pump wastewater all the ways to the wastewater treatment plant. Water would, domestic water would come from, um, Seltie's Way and make its way up to the north. And, um, we, we do have the plans on how to get stuff in there and how to get it phased. It's just a matter of seeing where the development comes and putting in the correct improvements to go along with development. Any initial questions on sewer or water? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, John, what's the school?
The school? At this time, they've communicated that they desire to locate a high school at that location.
Who, who does?
The Post Falls School District.
And it's not even in the city?
They purchased it, that was purchased a long time ago.
Can they put a school? Can they put a post-falls school when it's not in the city limits? Is that allowed?
Typically, that's, I think, they need to get sewer and water to the...
Okay, so, yeah, that's probably important before the school as well.
Okay, so now we're looking at the, is it consistent with the future land use map, goals and policies of the comprehensive plan? And the other items listed here are community plans, future land uses and geographic or natural features. So here, you know, we looked at the surrounding zoning. Uh, we have to the southeast of there, some residential, um, pockets of different densities. We also have identified some neighborhood commercial nodes you see there on the red. Looking at the future land use map here, we have the pink being the business commercial and the bluish tone being the transitional. How that comes to play is that when you look at the business commercial, the C C S and the C C M are permitted outright. The industrial, we go and we look at the focus area. So I'll pull that up here in just a bit. And that focus area is the West Prairie. So that offers further guidance of what may go in those locations. The purpose of this focus area is if you went and you set a future land use map and painted all these boxes is exactly how the future is going to be, you really don't know. I mean, a hundred percent. It's a goal, you're pointing the ship in the right direction and you have policies to help guide decision-making on public hearings of what could or couldn't go where. So that leads us back to the zoning distribution map that we discussed earlier. And you can see that predominantly west of this line, you see that C C M in industrial and you see that C C S in industrial. So two of those are permitted outright. And then while going to the right side, you see that transitional. And the transitional equally has commentary within it. And it states that guidance can be located within the associated focus area that puts us back to the other one. Aside shown zones should be compatible with adjacent zones uses within the city and consistent with the guiding principles of that focus area. So looking at the focus area, it calls out that a mix of residential, commercial and industrial uses are envisioned between the Corbin Road and Pleasant View. And that's where this industrial element on that section starts coming into play. I'll have to go back. So that's that business commercial. So it's specifically calling out that the land, the zones being called are supported by that, uh, focus area. The next statement calls out that mixed residential is envisioned between Maguire Road and Corbin Road. So there's that transitional right there with the residential and that school site being within that transitional area. Once again, that transition was a land use designation, not a zoning. Other items within the comp plan look to grow and sustain balanced, resilient economy for both, for Post Falls providing community prosperity and fiscal health. Also looking at the quantities of types of land uses to supporting community needs. A lot of this goes hand in hand. You can go look, you have, if you have jobs along Pleasant View, they're going to have an employment, they're going to, they're going to live somewhere. So you think, are they going to want to live on the other side of town and drive over to the west side all the time? Or do you want to provide opportunities with different housing and workforce through pockets throughout the community? And this would provide rooftops in, in close proximity to employment. The other item here is look to protect and maintain Post Falls natural resources, including clean air, soils, river and the aquifer. The aquifer where this kind of comes in is, it's going to develop, so you're either getting up with a lot of development in the county on septics or they develop in the city and they get on sanitary sewer. So the main reason why people want to get in the city is for sewer services. And it also aids to keeping the aquifer clean rather than having septic systems throughout the prairie. Now, the other three criteria look at commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. You can see in Rob's presentation, he talked about the, the interchange being put on fifty-three. That's going to be a pretty significant interchange that affects the types of land uses that can be in close proximity to it. And that's where that C C M and that industrial provide that, that flex to work and be cohesive with that, that road network. Limited neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned as they proceed further. And I'll have some slides to talk about that. The other one, industrial zoning, is where you have properties with sufficient access. I think it was identified in Rob's, um, portion about the corridors that provide good access to this for support of industrial zoning. So looking at the area and context, we have the Pleasant View interchange, you get the Beck interchange, and then you have the future, um, interchange at this location. So we're like looking at the context and what are the future land uses here? Because that's what we're looking at is where is this area going to? So there's going to be a push if this goes through, it's like you're going to have development on the west side, yet you have existing neighborhoods to the southeast. And so how is this going to transition further away from the, the higher impact areas? And it's more than likely going to get infilled with additional rooftops and housing. This is the one that talks about the school site and is an aerial kind of showing that transition. But it's not really a mystery of too big of how this is probably going to transition. This is how five acre lots, uh, infill develop. You end up with generally a road running down the middle of a five acre lot. And if you have a ten, they generally do something like this. This is the arrow leaf. This was a five acre lot with Tranquil, which staff works with the applicants. Because the idea is, at the end of the day, you want to get a development pattern that looks like it's connected in a planned development. So we have these areas that aren't currently in, but when they do, they'll end up putting their infrastructure. So that's more than likely how the area will look like. So that's more than likely how the area will look like that's residential between the proposed annexation area and the areas that are already in. And so when you go and look at the proposed zoning districts, it appears as if it's complementing the development pattern. It's currently going to the southeast and will blend to the proposed zoning districts that are currently within this proposed annexation. Here's who was noticed. We looked at the Post Falls School District. I mean, sorry, they responded. They stated that they remain neutral on this. And DEQ commented they would have general comments at the time of construction. If comments and questions on me, on those other review criteria dealing with the future land use map and consistency with the comp plan.
Is there any development planned or talked about at this point for this area?
As far as these sites specifically, I know Copper Basin does have this, and they do have a plan. Is it finalized? No, not 100%.
So where does the, the boundary of the proposed annexation and the existing city, where is, where are those boundaries?
So, I'll go back to... So, the road names are kind of blocking it all out, so I'm going to have to use a couple series. So, to the southeast, you see the light yellow and yellow. That is the city limits to the southeast. What you see in gray, which I'll go to the other map, this area, which was recently approved, is the city limits.
Okay.
They are a budding, the approved city limits at this location, and they are budding and contiguous at that location. They are also a budding and contiguous at the northern tip of that annexation. What you see in a red is the area that's currently not in the city, it's being proposed to be put in the city.
So really, it's just that little tiny piece right there, basically nothing more than a, I, not much bigger than a shoestring to connect boundaries of the existing, the existing city boundaries to the proposed...
Feel by, feel by legal definition? Is that contiguous?
Yeah, so I mean, we're looking at a very zoomed out version. We actually had a county property, the, that little triangle there is the transfer station. And the county actually gave us a large chunk of right-of-way.
So it's just by right-of-way? It's not actually...
No, it's, it's, it's land that was specifically given by the county to the city for the purposes of annexation.
To make the tie.
To make the tie.
Yep.
It was a 7,000 square foot strip of land that the county gave to us specifically for that purpose.
Mr. Seal, while you're up here, do you want to touch base on anything in regard? Because there had been several mentions of the URD and if proposed, the services that could be provided. Do you want to touch base on that at all?
The services that would be provided for the northern section. So, well, the way that the, now, in a couple of weeks, you guys will be presented with the urban renewal district plan, May 11th, I believe. And in that, the plan is, in addition to the feasibility study, speaks to the phasing of the infrastructure improvements that would be taking place along the corridor and north of there. The Phase 1 infrastructure improvements that would be taking place are going to focus on bringing this property here online, which would be intersection improvements at Grange, water line coming all the way up from, from Seltis. Can I make this work again? And, and a, the water line would come all the way up to Prairie, as well as a sewer line that would basically start at a, be a pressure main that would pop across Prairie to this, to this corner here at Copper Basin's piece, and then run south back down. Generally speaking, it's simple. It would get those online and it would get services just to the north of Prairie. That would then be potentially tied into, in further phases down the road. The school district is aiming for six or seven years, they need a high school online. They are now nearing capacity and recognize that it's not going to be able to be pushed out any longer.
So to wait six or seven years until the demand is really there and then try to move services?
Let's say that it's probably going to take us six or seven years to get services there.
Thank you.
And, and one more time, I still don't quite get it. How come you guys are doing the annexations for all these different folks?
Because, so because we, so because we're doing the urban renewal district, so while we, so 12 or 13 years ago, we were approached by the primary property owners of the pieces up here, as well as property owner that owns much of this corridor. And at that time, it was determined, you know, and they started moving through the process, and at that time, it was determined it just wasn't quite right yet. And then about two years ago, a little more than two years ago now, property owners along this stretch, again, along Pleasantview, came in and began the conversation again with us. And following on the tails of that conversation, a, this piece of property here began to get looked at by a large company. That large company has been a primary promoter and advocate and is the reason behind essentially going through this whole process. That the potential jobs for that site is about 1,250 jobs that will be at, you know, stemming from the development of that site. In order to get the infrastructure in place, we needed to look at, you know, what tools does the city have in order to provide infrastructure up this route? Essentially, urban renewal is the one tool that we get to, that we can really utilize. So, going that route, we had to look at where can we get enough increment to make all the improvements that are going to need to be made? And in order to feasibly have the study pan out, we looked at needing to add in the property to the north, which he has had looked at. There is, there is some industrial development that is looking at the site now for the property to the north as well. But again, it, it all stems from...
Quick increment.
Well, we're going to need the increment to have it built out. And the feasibility study does indicate that even at a conservative look at it, it is extremely feasible. So, but today, all you're really looking at is the zoning recommendation, but that's just a little background behind it, but you'll be seeing more of that soon.
Okay. Any other questions for applicant? You'll have to wait. You can have conversation with Mr. Seal, but unless you're signed up and you come up to the front and state your name. Are you signed up for public comment yet?
I did fill out a piece of paper.
Okay.
Name is Hayden McLevy, and I went to the public school.
Okay, it'll, it'll, give me just a minute and we'll get you up there. Thank you, sir. Any other comments for staff slash applicant? None? Okay. All right. Public comment, those in favor?
And this time, I'm, I'm sure that there's none.
It's all right. I appreciate you keeping me on my two toes. Neutral?
We have one.
So we do have one individual, neutral, that does wish to speak, Mr. Bob Flowers, come on up. And while he comes up, do you want to bring me those that are opposed so that I have those?
Yeah. Bob Flowers, 3914 East Maplewood. The reason I basically declared neutral was because just a week ago, a lot of us were presented with this exact plan by an engineer, basically told us what type of businesses were going in there, what zoning was going to be there. Everything was already all laid out. Figured it was a done deal. It wasn't even in the city, or it's still not in the city. I'm also neutral because I want to bring any job we can get here to Post Falls. And that's where all this basically started with. A trucking company, the city, and the school. And they had to try to figure out how to get sewer and water up to this gentleman's company and use urban renewal to do it. Well, the only way they could do it was to try to annex in this northern part. I, I'm not exactly sure. The county told them they didn't want anything to do with the project. But then, the city got with the county again, and they gave them that little strip of land there to make this so-called contiguous, so it would fall underneath the annexation rules. I, I honestly believe that this hearing is a joke because it's a done deal. They've gone through, it's a deal that was put together with a company, the city, and the school district. Because the school had this whole chunk of land over there, they had no idea how they were going to get sewer and water to it. Because of what, one, it wasn't even in the city. But I, I honestly believe that this particular public hearing is a gigantic waste of time because it's a done deal. It's for the good of the city, but the way it was approached and the way it was put together, I think it could have been done better. I do not like the way people meet in executive sessions and business conferences away from the public to put together something like this. That's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. Just for the record, I would strongly disagree with executive session and private meetings because we know that from a legal standpoint, that doesn't happen. So I'll just go ahead and add that to that. We do have one individual that is against, that does wish to speak, that is on Zoom, so we want to start there.
Yes. Her name is Catherine Berg. There we go.
Okay. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, go ahead. If you'd say your name and address, you have four minutes.
My name is Catherine Berg. I live at 14897 West Prairie Avenue. Good evening and thank you for agreeing to hear me. I want to get out some points that I noticed by listening to this real quick before I go into what I wrote down. Cootenay County has a future land use that shows this area that they want to annex now as Hauser District. So whatever future land use the city is referring to, as well as road designations, are really new. Post Falls Highway District shows Prairie Avenue as a minor arterial. I would also like to say that this plan or this application completely disregards the five-acre residential lots already in existence, as you can see on their plan map, how many of those are. And I will tell you too, that a county is able to set up a sewer system. Cootenay County might not be doing that now, but they're able to do that. I used to live in Spokane County, so I know it can happen outside of a city limit. So, last year, we were finally able to purchase our dream home on five acres. We're surrounded by alfalfa fields and other five-acre residential properties. We did our due diligence. We knew eventually more houses would go around us on five-acre plots allowed by Cootenay County zoning. We never anticipated that two really, really short weeks ago, we'd get notified by the city of Post Falls that they're going to take that away from us with such a huge change. I mean, like, wow, we're going to go from five-acre agricultural lots to commercial, industrial, and residential. I guess I really don't understand why this has been rammed down our throats and, and why is it happening, other than the school district, which could be annexed by itself. I said, it seems like the only ones that benefit from this area are the developers, or excuse me, this plan are the developers. The only landowner cited in this application that owns property along Prairie Avenue is the landowner, or is that developer. The other landowners in this application do not own property along Prairie Avenue. They own land along the other annexation. And the annexation along Pleasantview that was just approved this month. The Prairie Avenue is currently two lanes, and for a mile around me, it's got five-acre residential lots, which means you're going to now take away 55 feet of my land or more to create 110-foot wide road. I'd like to ask, there's a five-acre section of land directly to the west of our property. You can see it on the map if you want to. That five-acre section of land has our well. That well services the four properties to the east of it. This application takes away those water rights and makes no mention of where we're supposed to get our water. The Critical Arterial Corridor, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, is also a recent designation that was designated in 2019 after we bought our property. So I guess I would ask you, why is this happening so fast? Apparently, it's an already done deal, but who knew that? Why can't we take our time and all sit down at the table and figure out how the developers can give up a little so the current residents don't have to give up so much? Maybe you could designate it all as an R1 instead of CCM, industrial, and RM. And I just learned those terms, so it's weird. At least then those people who are buying into the R1 zone would, would realize what they're getting and not be screwed over later. I guess why does the city of Post Falls get to bypass or change Cootenay County zoning? I don't, again, I don't really understand how this works. And I guess really, how far does the city intend to go and how much is enough? You know, what do you really want the city to look like, knowing you can't possibly accommodate all of need for housing and still keep the heart of Post Falls?
And that puts you right at your four minutes. So if you want to go ahead and close, and then we'll allow rebuttal from the city after this.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We've got Harlan Schnecker, who is, is the requested zoning compatible with street classification, traffic patterns, and existing development? No. High-density multifamily with no infrastructure is just bad business. This will be used for Washington State employees that don't like Idaho wages. Commercial high-density residential zoning is assigned to streets in higher classifications? Says no. Highway 53 is the only road with high density usage. How worse will Prairie, Maguire, Pleasantview be with high-density multifamily trying to bypass 53 by hitting side streets? Limited neighborhood commercial lower-density zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away? Says no. This area is all rural. Industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties sufficient access to major transportation routes. It says, then how can you have high-density multifamily industrial in the same plat? The requested zoning district is in accordance with future land use map. It says no. And no to the requested zoning is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Tyler and Sarah Emery, is this request compatible with street classifications? No. It'll destroy the geographic and the nature features of the area with brand-new, high-end homes built nearby. The proposed is inconsistent with already existing development. Commercial and high-density zoning is typically assigned for streets with higher road classifications? No. I'm opposed to the above statement because the area is zoned rural. Even through Prairie, it's probably a higher classification road. The amount of infrastructure change needed to get this to the full functioning as commercial or high-density will upset and destroy the area of the property and the surrounding. High-density residential, commercial, and industrial zoning and rural residential cannot harmoniously coincide. One always takes over the other. Mountain views, quiet country mornings, farm fields, and country neighbors can never be replaced once industry and commercial takes over. Industrial and commercial pollute and drown these out. We want to stay rural. We strongly oppose rezoning. Limited neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for property that's further away from high urban areas? No. Where we live is not close to any high urban activity, therefore, it should continue to be zoned low-density residential. This proposed, this proposal brings the high-density urban activity to us instead of away from us. Industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient major, access to major transportation routes? No. The industrial zoning of this plan puts it smack dab... "The industrial zoning of this plan puts it smack dab next door to residential, destroying property values and natural beauty of rural neighborhoods. We highly oppose this." Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? No. "The future land map just shows a transitional zoning for most of the acreage. It is too vague and nonspecific. There is no protection or preservation for the rural family acreage currently existing in the area. We all hear about is future growth, all we hear about is future growth and jobs. It's nice to see we are planning for the people who don't live here yet, but what about the families who already do? What about the new families who sold their place to purchase high-end homes in the country? Where was the consideration in the future land use? It won't be recognized when the proposed future land is completed, and the quality of citizens who enjoy this rural area will no longer want to live here. I'm guessing that this may be your underlying plan. You may take this area undesirable for rural, if you make this area undesirable for rural acreage, then they will move elsewhere, and the land will be used for more of the same what you proposed with the Pleasant View North annexation." "Is the requested zone consistent with the comprehensive plan?" No. "I have requested the file, and it is not clear to me what is, the comprehensive plan is different than the future land use map. The bottom line is that we live here, and we strongly oppose the Pleasant View annexation." In opposition, that does not wish to speak, Joshua Farkas, is that right? Did I say that right? "I shoot targets on my property. Will the development cause, and will the development change and cause it to be a crime to shoot on my property? Will my property continue to be county and not put into the city? I have dirt berm set up and shoot safely at this time. Why did the city fight for me on building an in-law suite in a five-acre over the Aquifer but will allow these construction companies to build hundreds of homes?" In opposition, does not wish to speak, Ray.
I would like to speak, if that's okay.
Okay, why don't you come to the mic? I'll change this on the form. State your name, address, and you have four minutes, sir.
My name is Ray Gregorius. I live at 14334 West Bodine Avenue in Post Falls. Saga of this piece of property is just unbelievable. What nobody has mentioned is there is a big, old giant easement right through the middle of this property. It has three high-tension power lines running across it. It has three high-pressure natural gas pipelines that run underneath of it. It runs diagonally. Can I use your mouse and?
Mr. Seale, can you assist?
Yeah, let me see if we can actually find it. John, do you know if there's a better map that shows it a little better?
You can go back to that one.
This one works kind of well.
Okay.
If you want, you can use this pointer.
Okay. Cool. How's it work? Push the button?
The center one.
Okay. So that white area right there, I'm assuming is where the easement, or where the pipelines run. They run diagonally all the way through here, so you won't be building anything there. The school district, I don't believe, up until recently, owned this property. I think it was gifted by Copper Basin, who owns the majority of the balance of the property, who tried to put in a housing development 12 years ago with no provision for sewer, no, it was just a affordable housing project that the county turned down. I don't know when my neighborhood over here got designated as a transitional area. Myself, most of my neighbors that are here that I know, our acreage is not transitional. Our acreage is five-acre parcels. They have homes on them. They're probably going to stay that way. As development moves out from here, this land is going to get nothing but more and more expensive for these developers to buy. So end around. That gets water and sewer and all the rest of the infrastructure out there. I don't like it. It's not appropriate for the area. Everything around that is five-acre parcels. Yes, we have septic. We have one septic on a five-acre parcel. That's all you can have in that area unless your house is built way back when, when they would allow a smaller block size. This Pleasant View annexation, the other side of it, was approved, what, April 6th? And I received my notification for this on April 12th. So it's kind of, goes without saying that I know we don't have back-room meetings and deals like that, but it kind of makes sense how it all happened in that timeline. That's pretty much all I got. I'm sure others are opposed.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir. Not wishing to speak, but I do not see, they didn't mark in favor, opposed, or neutral, Hunter Phelps. What's that?
I'm sorry, I forgot to raise this against.
So opposed? Okay, I will make note of that. Thank you.
And Ryan?
Yes.
We do have one more in Zoom that would like to speak. She's got the hand raised.
Okay. You want to patch them in? If you are in Zoom world, please state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Judy?
Hi, my name is Judy Kiker. I also tried to give you an input during the first one in Foxtail. So I live on Polline in Foxtail Development. I did, as I listened to this annexation here, that Polline would be impacted, and I'd like to know more about that. I, as a homeowner, already, like today, on Polline at 3:00, traffic is almost to Zoros. We don't even have the 800 apartments that are being built right now on Zoros feeding into Polline. So I'm not sure how we are supposed to get in and out of our development with now you're going to do something else that's going to impact Polline. So I'd like to know more about that. I can't tell from your map, reading it online, what you're really proposing, but it does not sound good to me as a homeowner. I'm very emotional about it. It just, it feels like this is not going to be a place, a city I want to live in because you are just growing so rapidly. The other woman who spoke said, "Why are we in such a rush to build all these apartments in our city right now?" In addition, I don't think anyone's mentioned that Highway 41, the off-ramp of I-90, is going to be rerouted. All of that construction, in addition to Highway 41 construction, is going to impact our traffic. You cannot do an accurate traffic study today based on what we have now built because you have approved, I don't know, I don't know how many thousand more things that are in construction. Seems to me we need to see what has been already approved before we approve more. So that would be my endpoint. I'm so thankful for the three commissioners who said no to Foxtail. I want to give you all a hug. So this particular one, if it impacts Polline more and it'll impact 41, our access to the freeways, traffic is a huge issue in Post Falls, and we need to slow it down, is my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Also in opposition wishing to speak, Kirk Becker. And while he's coming up, sir, you stood up earlier. What was your name?
Hayden.
Hayden, do we have a?
It's probably hard to read.
I gave.
Would you do me a favor while he's speaking? Would you grab another form, fill it out, and turn it in, just so we can give you that Sir, state your name, address, you have four minutes.
My name's Kirk Becker. I'm at 14024 West Harmon Avenue. I'm just a simple guy. I've been pretty much living out in the Prairie my whole life. I was raised out there, and I'm fortunate enough now to have my own kids living out in the Prairie out there. One of my main concerns, and probably echoing a lot of stuff that's already been said, but traffic out there right now is getting pretty bit bad as it is. And then we want to load up with more traffic, and we want to put a bunch more, developing more houses out there. And it doesn't come with just houses, it comes with more apartment complexes, and we're getting a whole bunch of them over on Foxtail, too, on top of other ones being around there. And that's, being zoned, from my understanding, is supposed to be zoned, be okay for apartment complexes, and that's more traffic that's going up around there. Like I said, that's been said before, the one house per five acres, that's the rule that's always been out there, and that's the way it's been for a long time. And that's the way a lot of us like it that way. And that's the way we, why we're living out there is because of that. Not sure where else. I mean, my kids ride their bikes on the road, just like I did when I was a kid, and now on Prairie, it's turning into a highway. Where are they supposed to cross the roads? And where, how are they supposed to go see their friends, go to school, go to church, and all that other stuff? Pretty much all I got to say right now.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Will you bring that forward? In opposition wishing to speak, Tyler Emery.
Sir, there is, there's like a train right there, right?
Sir Emery, you have comments here, but since you're going to speak, I'm assuming you'll cover that.
I will.
Name and address, you have four minutes, sir.
My name's Tyler Emery. I live at 14578 West Prairie Avenue. Thank you tonight. So a couple of things I've heard through all the different zoning and annexation hearings tonight is a lot about traffic. I'm a civil engineer, so I cut my teeth with Washington State Department of Transportation just over the border designing highways and streets. I've heard a lot of things that I just don't feel are adequate when it comes to the transportation as a greater plan for Post Falls. I hear a lot of seams. I don't see that traffic will be this way. We will encourage traffic to go this way. I heard we anticipate traffic will be this way. My question is, is has there been a comprehensive plan done for the city of Post Falls or the greater area? We had entire models built for Spokane. When we did construction projects, even repairing a single bridge, we modeled all of Spokane, the guy that sat next to me modeled all of Spokane Valley to see that impact because transportation issues are systematic. We know that driver behavior is, when you impact one area, people will go to other areas. You know, I saw one consultant here earlier show how, you know, okay, this is going to reduce from a level of B to level C. It was a very, I'm sorry to say, nearsighted traffic modeling. It was a very small model. It didn't look at an entire system. And that's what's going to happen to Post Falls if we don't plan ahead. And I don't know if the engineers have gone ahead and have looked at this, they may have these models, they may have been looking at it. But I don't know about you, but I don't like the level of service decreasing. That's what the one consultant already showed us. It's nice on a piece of paper to say, ah, it's from level of C, you know, level of service B to level of service C. A lot of people don't understand that. I mean, that's more noise pollution, that's more light pollution, that's more safety issues, that's harder on our emergency services getting around. That's more cost to our city to repair these larger systems. I mean, we used to come in and try and promise these big things to these cities with frontage roads and trails and all this, but then we had to come back in as the state and repair these things. That's additional cost later on that the people bear as a burden on top of them. You know, my wife lived, she grew up on Stone Avenue, not far from here. We bought an acre out here on Prairie Avenue, we're one of the few that has an acre, and have our four kids out there. We're super excited to live out there and raise our family and our four children out there. We had goats and chickens and all these kinds of things. Now we're, the potential is to have apartments built across the street? I mean, that's not the Post Falls we want, that's not the Post Falls that the people are moving here want. I mean, jobs and providing jobs is a good thing, I understand that, but my cousin moved here because he had a job, and he could work from home, and a lot of people are moving here because of that, too. So this is a different dynamic with the people who are moving here. Not all of, we don't have to provide all these jobs and all this industry here. I mean, if I go down the road to Beck Road and look across the street at Idaho Asphalt, I'll hate to call him out, but that industrial site isn't pretty, and I smell it from my house every night when the wind blows my direction. You know, so this does affect everybody and these people and these zones. I feel bad for my neighbors that just moved in and spent a bunch of money and built a five-acre place, and they shoot their rifle in their backyard safely into a berm, and now there's going to be something built behind it. And this does seem somewhat of a bit of a strange deal with a seven, you know, we're going to hand 7,000 square feet between the county to the city so that this can happen. This should, why can't we allow this to naturally build out? Nothing around this should be a, this doesn't look like a transitional area. I mean, there's a lot here I could talk about, but I think I covered most of it. So thank you. You know, we're people here that live around here, we have families, and we love this place.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Got one more. While we're waiting for that one, Mr. Burns, Howard Burns, please come up.
Good night. It's not evening anymore.
No, it is not.
All right. Howard Burns, 502 South Rocky Point Court, Post Falls. So we had the Tullamore Annexation some time ago being requested, which the city finally turned down. You folks approved it because it was premature, there was too much, and that was on Prairie. It was a very high-density RM going down to 3,000-square-foot lots. This makes that look on time. This is so ahead of its time, and I agree with Mr. Flowers. I'm up here, I'm talking to you about it, but I think it's a done deal. I listened to somebody explain how all the studies have been done, and here's how we're going to get the sewer and the water and all the rest of it. And then, as this discussion was made of the plan, no comment has been made. You had the people objecting to the truck terminal because it's up against Woodbridge and the incompatible uses. You have a giant transfer station here. They want more business to go to the transfer station because Ramsey is too crowded. Get more people go to the Prairie, that's what they want. And that is right on top of what you say is going to be commercial zoning, which allows apartments, high-density apartments. And then you have the RM zoning on top of that, all around what was supposed to be transitioning. When you look at Polo Green with one-acre lots, that's, if you're transitioning from one-acre lots, you go to, maybe you go to, and then you got the five-acre lots, so maybe a half-acre lots of transition. To drop down to RM zoning and allowing 18 to 21 acres in the CM zone for apartments right across from the transfer station? This is all way too premature. If you've got to have a URD, take it up to the current annexation, that's already in there, and then decide, after it's all there, five, 10, 15 years from now, however long it's going to be. In addition to that, the URD, I believe, takes all the fees away from the fire department. We don't have a fire department impact fee. We need to have that in place so that the fire department doesn't suffer when all the property tax increment is taken away. They don't get anything. Full width on Pleasant View. How are you going to get a full 110-foot width on Pleasant View and only half of it's in the city? And are you going to put roundabouts on Pleasant View while semi-trucks are trying to go up? You can't get a semi-truck comfortably through a roundabout. If anybody hasn't seen it, they drive across both lanes, and the wheels go up onto the middle trying to get through roundabouts. So it's way too premature, and it's unfair to the people that live up there on the one, two, five-acre properties.
Thank you, sir. All right, lastly, Hayden, Hayden, pronounce your last name for me.
It's McElvein.
McElvein, all right. State your name and address, and you also have four minutes, sir.
I live on 7375 North Carrington Lane, and I grew up on Meyer Road, and I went to Post Falls High School, and I go to North Idaho College. I drive this road every day for the last 10 years. There is a power line that goes that way, but there's also train track. This is actually kind of an interesting piece of property because of the train. I feel like we're wearing these masks because there's an air shortage, and there's a water shortage, and there's a sewer shortage. I think that things are going a little faster than they need to. We need to slow down. How many cows, how many dairy farmers are in Idaho right now? What are people going to eat? You know, the oat farms, the potato farms, the vegetables, the fruits, we're going to starve if we keep building. I think that this piece of property is very interesting. It's very large. 371 acres is a lot of land, and I don't think that, right now, it's kind of late in the night, we're all getting kind of tired, I know I worked a long day, that it would be kind of rushed to pass this tonight. I do think that if you wanted to build a high-rise out there by the train where people could get on a train and go to Spokane and back, that might be something. But to take 371 acres and put little trailer parks in there, whatever you're doing, I don't think that's appropriate. I think we need to use our space more efficiently, New York-style, where you can walk downstairs and go to work, take your neighbors to the bar and walk home, not be driving around. and go to work, take your neighbors to the bar and walk home, not be driving around. We need to be able to walk, we need to be able to have public transportation and we need to be respectful of the water and the sewer. That's all, thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you, Hayden, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Since city represents the applicant, we want to address...
I can say stuff too, it just seems like you're eager over there.
I don't get to go often enough, I like to hear myself talk. Obviously, the community development director. I appreciate everybody's comments and I understand where everybody's coming from and this is why we go through these planning processes, this is why we have a comprehensive plan, this is why we do master planning studies for transportation, sewer, water, everything. Just kinda going down some of the lists of some of the comments that came up and just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, this is, this is currently county land, which, you know, five acre property sounds all good, however, there is, has to be that recognition that every single five acre property is going to go to the septic systems. Just as kind of a note, after talking to the county community development director last week, week before, Cooney County saw 400 houses built last year. That was over 1,920 acres of land eaten up and utilized just for 400 houses. So, if you wanna see the dissolution of Prairie land and farmland, that's the way to go. When we looked at this prop, this, this stretch, we really did take into consideration the fact that it's gonna get developed, whether it's in the city or whether it's in the county. By bringing it into the city, we're able to have it utilized for a much higher and better use and primarily getting it off the septic systems and getting it off of individual wells. This is gonna be city served by water and sewer. You can see the Big Horn property across the street on Prairie, just as for an instance, you know, that's the five acre properties that are being currently used for industrial development there. Without bringing in additional lands, that was how, we're also gonna be seeing it work out. After talking to Panhandle Health recently, they have a real tough time with those properties and making sure that they are maintaining their septic systems in a manner that they're supposed to be done. There is some kind of flow information that's been set aside by that development, but that's, again, outside this conversation. Talking about Hauser, somebody brought up the fact that it wasn't Hauser ACI, yes, we met with Hauser last year and discussed the fact that it wasn't Hauser ACI and Hauser is focused on the other side of 53 primarily. They currently do not have any access to sewer or water either for this area. The well on the existing property will have to be determined and figured out during the development process, you know, it's not the intention of any developer to, you know, mess with somebody's existing well systems. When you talk about the, again, the focus of this tonight is the actual adoption or recommendation for the zoning and they are right that there is the core, the easement area that goes in between there and that is kind of that perfect line as they do a transitional type of development. The owner of the property has already begun developing this section up in here, which is why it's not being recommended for zoning and they are doing five acre parcels up in that area. They did indicate that if it doesn't end up coming into the city, they will just do five acre parcels and develop it out that way. However, they do agree that there's a better use for the land and continuing to put, you know, million and a half dollar homes up there, all on septic, is not necessarily in the best interest of the city or in Cooney County. The timing of the, you know, the, somebody noted that the fact that the annexation of Phase 1 was done on, I believe, April 6th, around that time period and this notification came shortly thereafter, the, they were only done in phases because we were still in the process of determining which pieces were coming in. These ones kind of came in as a last minute question, basically, these two industrial, well, this industrial one here, it's actually three parcels, was one of the current landowners and apparently he thought that that was in the original annexation piece. And so he contacted us and we said, well, we can go ahead and tie it into the second round of, of annexations. So, it was, it's just kind of a timing thing, we were working on getting signatures and getting all the zoning lined up and stuff like that, that's why we kind of broke it up into two different phases. There was no trying to sneak it in, wait until that first one got approved, it was just the way that signatures were coming in because we needed to work with each individual property owner to get the consent to annex through that process. And it was the same kind of comment, the same piece that came in with this one also decided that since he was gonna be adjacent to the city limits, you know what, time to go ahead and come in. He was already looking at the future, planning on it going that route. Same with this one, they contacted me about a week or two after the other two and said that they would like to come in as well. And they understand that services will not be available to them immediately, but they felt that it was just the right time to go ahead and come into the city. You know, again, this is all about the zoning piece of it, we could always touch upon different traffic improvements that are all part of the plans, but these are, there are plans, there are traffic improvements, there are wastewater improvements, there is water improvements that are planned and set up so that the timing will work for that development to happen phases at a time. Starting with this piece here and then allowing for that connection up there and then more or less working slowly south is kind of along the line. How it actually happens will be determined as proposals come in for development. If something happened down here earlier, it would likely be able to, again, work on that figuring out that phasing. It's part of the phase plan, it is over a 20-year period technically under the RM renewal district, but it'll be depend on the timing of improvements. When we, when everybody's talking about high-density multifamily going on to the RM and CM zones, there is limitations as to the percentages that each of those would even be allowed to have for multifamily and that is still a second step in this process. Prior to any development taking place up there, there's going to have to be a development agreement that goes forward and through the city council for approval. That development agreement will look closer at the areas within each of those zones and break down the amount of single-family, the amount of duplexes, the amount of multifamily, just generally speaking, it will tie in and get to those details, including, you know, a general location as to where those transitional lines of, of housing will go within that. Same within the commercial mixed zone is that it'll be looking at where is the commercial best located around the intersections, potentially along the frontage improvement, the frontage of Prairie and how does that transition towards other sections within the properties? Hayden Avenue will proceed and, and be running down through here as a major roadway, so, as well.
So, the, so the commercial mix that folks are upset over...
This one.
...being multifamily, they would have to come in for a, for a special use permit on that, is that right?
That's a commercial mixed zone, so actually what they have to do before they're allowed to do anything there is a full development agreement with the city council and that's where they will start to indicate where on the property they will be putting commercial, where is the road network, you know, typically we look for the major road networks through it and we, then they can talk about how much of the property can be potentially built out as multifamily. And it is limited to 50%, I believe...
Yeah, it's 50%.
...of the land to be allocated.
Different than CCS. CCS, you can ask for a special use permit over the whole thing, so...
Correct.
...in some aspects, a CCM is more restrictive in regards to multifamily than a CCS in light of the special use permit process.
And one of the things I do wanna note about this is that, you know, besides the school district, this is all owned by Crystal Creek Properties. They're the ones that are developing the larger prop, the larger five acre parcels up here with very expensive homes. And so they will be looking at how this development happens, they've done a lot of development in a lot of areas and they, you know, will likely transition, making smart transitions between a commercial to a residential, whether it be a higher density into a lower density depending upon how it fits in with the overall development of their, of their pieces. So, it's not, it's not broken up as much where you have to be concerned that one developer will, you know, develop out heavy industrial on one side of the street while the other person's trying to do a lower density residential on the other, you know, something along those lines. Plus the fact that there is the, I believe, 100-foot easement in there with utility and gas lines does provide a separation between those industrial uses and potentially some residential and/or commercial on the other side.
So, you anticipate that the residential would be to the north of the easement and the south across from the waste transfer might become more commercial?
I would, I would anticipate, you know, I, I really only am guessing, honestly, but it really, it depends on what they come in with, but at the same time, staff does have, you know, we do meet with develop, developers and provide recommendations and have those conversations. I would anticipate that some of the higher, well, again, you can only put, you can't put much higher, high-density stuff in the RM zone anyways, but you will probably see it closer to Prairie and then as you move away from Prairie, you're going to see the density decrease. The, this easement through here is, I think, a good breakup for that industrial land that's over here and how they develop, I'm not sure what they would do along Hayden Avenue there, I have no idea, but I think that it provides a decent break. And again, most of the industrial type of properties that we, our industrial zoning doesn't necessarily allow for heavy industrial such as the asphalt plant, I don't know if they could do that type of facility within our existing industrial zoning.
I don't have every use memorized.
Yeah, it's just, there's only a few hundred in there.
So, you said that you referred to annexation Phase 1, would, would have that, would have you been referring to Pleasant View West Annexation? You were...
Pleasant View West Annexation was Phase 1, yes.
Okay, and then this proposed as Phase 2?
Correct.
So, but we weren't given any indication that there is gonna be a Phase 2, we were just completely told about Phase 1, right? And, and I kind of had an idea or my thought process was that it could stand alone. It could, you could bring in business, that's, that was the, I guess, the appeal of having it industrial is it was gonna bring business in and that was kind of the appeal of stretching our boundaries out there is, hey, okay, well, it's gonna bring in some business, it's gonna bring in some jobs, but I didn't have any understanding of that it really can't stand alone, it's gotta have this additional property is basically what's being said so that it can be part of a URD, so that it can take those monies and provide the infrastructure to reach out to these industrial properties. Is that kind of what, my nutshell in it there?
Well, you know, we have, we have done workshops and things along those lines regarding the RM renewal district for the last two, you know, year and a half or so, so I mean, and it has included that area to the north during every conversation and we did indicate that it was Phase 1 when we came forward and again, it was just looking at the zoning designations, does this work? Now, you know, again, as we've noted for the last year and a half going through this process, is that a big part of this is trying to get the school district, which has owned the property for many, many years and they don't have any other land within the city at this time that they can build a school on. When you're talking about a high school, you need 60 acres of land. And so at this time, again, we are focusing on, that was a big part of trying to get this in and the timing was gonna work well for the school district. In addition, you know, we're starting to see annexations come up such, you know, roads such as McGuire. There was some annexations further just to the south of this area actually that have come in in the last year. I think they brought in about 15 acres of land down there and we're starting to see additional, you know, we will continue to see the gradual annexation of some of these individual five acre parcels over time as the demand for housing and other uses kind of gradually brings in and closes that, that hole basically. You know, we are working to, this is an area that only required a handful of owners in order to, you know, create this urban renewal district, this potential urban renewal district and this industrial zone, industrial land. And then as we're looking to the north, as we got across Prairie, you know, it was up in the air as to what is best for this. And when we, you know, looked at it initially, we didn't know what kind of development they'd be looking at. We knew that the owner had had conversations with commercial property owner or commercial developments, industrial developments as well as, as well as doing housing. So, we didn't know what kind of zoning he would be looking for and this is where he landed in terms of the best mix for his property and especially along that Pleasant View Prairie intersection that is going to become, you know, the Pleasant View corridor is going to continue to be a major corridor, especially as the intersection improvements happen at Highway 53. And somebody did note the roundabout and trucks getting through roundabouts, part of the improvement plans for that corridor is to widen that to a two-lane roundabout.
So, what would happen if this, if this annexation was, was denied and didn't happen, then what, what would the future be for that Pleasant View annexation or, or Phase 1?
Like, you know...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're making a recommendation to council.
Yeah, we're just looking at the six review criteria.
Yeah.
So, you're just looking at, is it consistent with the future land use map? Does it consist with the goals and policies? You're looking at the transportation elements. Those six criteria that was part of the presentation are what you're looking at right now.
We've get, we have obviously given a lot of background info and there's a lot of info that goes into all this, but in reality, what we are, as we've noted a few times, is, you know, what is, as John just said, you know, looking at the review criteria, does the zoning recommendation, you know, what would be your zoning recommendation to council?
Then they take a lot of what we discussed tonight as part of a separate public hearing as it's germane to annexations and to make that decision on the recommendation of zoning and the other policies associated to the annexation decision.
So, this isn't as an annexation, this is a zoning recommendation?
Correct. All annexations are that way.
I'm sorry, what?
All annexations are run that way.
So, it is an annexation?
So, it's, we, we recommend the zoning, this is the zoning board, so it's...
Okay, so this, it won't be part of the city of Post Falls then?
No, it will be, but what, yeah, our responsibility is to say...
Only recommend zoning?
Yep, and the city...
Not whether or not it's going to be annexed?
Yeah. Any other questions for staff slash applicant? Nope. Okay. Go ahead and close this, open it up for comment, thoughts? Vicky Jo, I heard you first, you go ahead.
I'm just trying to still figure it all out.
It's been a long night.
Um, I, the main reason I would be for doing this is for the school because I know that we are in, Post Falls is in desperate need of getting a second high school in and we would have to get it into the city in order to do that. So, that would be the main reason that I would go for the annexation.
Yeah, I like the school coming in, you know, I like the business regardless of what been said tonight, I, I kinda do think it, there was, I wouldn't say backdoor meetings, but there was just conversation and, but I think that just comes with the fact that all that land is by one owner and they have a plan and they wanted, wanted to orchestrate it. But I, I mean, I do like that we can get some more businesses in here and, and the land for the school, which is needed.
Anyone else? Nope.
I think it seems like a reasonable zoning mix for the area.
Uh, I, I, I would love to see a, a new school, be able to be built. I, I don't... I, I don't, I just see it, I just see that we're sprawling out, and I prefer to, you know, address infill areas and, and connectivity, and so I, I'm not necessarily opposed to what, what a potential zoning would be. Yeah, that's, that's about all I got on that.
Again, I just have to continually go back. This isn't an overnight thing that the entire Prairie is going to be tore up and, and that apartments are being built and businesses are going to come in overnight. This is a long, drawn-out process that will take time, and I do like the idea of services being able to get up there. I know there's always concern about the Prairie, the aquifer, and I think rather than hindering this, being able to actually get folks off of septic, I think there's definitely some advantages. But growing up in Aurora community, I also understand the growing pains and, and the feeling of being a kid in a field, so I get that as well. I look for a motion.
I have a question quick first. Can I-
You can ask staff because we just closed, we closed the hearing out. So unless we reopen it and bring it up to everybody else. So you, we correct, we can discuss it, correct?
Okay, I can ask you.
Well, is it, is it relating to information in the record?
Can she ask the question?
Well, I can ask it, you can tell me no. I just want to know, okay, so with the zoning that we're proposing, they still have to come before us for any, anything that they're going to do with it, right?
No, subdivisions are under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Site plans, if there are site plans, eventually that's administrative.
Yeah.
Development agreements that would go with the mixed zones, that goes to city council.
Okay, but they would, most of it would have to come between, to one of the bodies for approval.
So if you're asking if there's checks and balances?
Yes, pretty much.
Yes, there's future.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Unrelated to, that's a process question, so.
That was close.
I almost got kicked off.
All right. I would entertain a motion of some capacity at this time.
Okay. Is it, am I recommending approval to the city council?
It would be recommending approval of the zone change for the annexation zero zero.
Okay, so I recommend approval of the multiple zone changes as noted in the-
And I, I should clarify, it's not a zone change, it's the initial zoning upon annexation. Sorry.
Okay, wait a minute. Okay, I move to recommend approval of the initial zoning request. Finding that is consistent with a comprehensive plan, there are no, and findings and conclusions in the staff report, and recommend with the requested zoning, multiple zoning, as noted in the staff report.
Name the file name, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't do that. Pleasant View North Annexation, A N N X zero 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 eight, 2021.
Okay, there's been a motion put forth.
I'll, I'll second it.
Motion is second, call for vote.
Yambi? Schlothauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right, that file will be moved on to city council. Let's, let's take quicks, you want to take quick two-minute, quick two-minute break? And we're back. We will go ahead and open up the final public hearing this evening, and that would be the Jaclyn Riverbend Annexation. It's all yours.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Lori Jones, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls, introducing the Jaclyn Riverbend Annexation. The property owner is Jaclyn Land Company, Olsie, and the applicant is Miller Stoffler Architects. The requested action tonight is to make recommendation to city council for the zoning designation of high-density residential R3 on 10.4 acres and community commercial services on 1.61 acres as part of an annexation request of approximately 12.09 acres total on two parcels into the City of Post Falls. The location of the property is south of the intersection of West Point Parkway and West Riverbend Avenue located south of Interstate 90 and north of the Spokane River. Parcel information, the land used currently, there was a office building that had multiple tenants over the years, and that has recently been demolished, and there are currently some industrial uses on the site. Two notable characteristics of the site is the Spokane River, and then in future slides, I'll go over the eastern property line that has a steep embankment, and then the water sewer provider is the City of Post Falls. Looking at the surrounding zoning, to the north is a special district, with commercial and industrial leased spaces, also owned by Jaclyn Land Company. To the east is the Greyhound Park and Event Center, zoned industrial. To the south is the Spokane River. On the opposite side of the Spokane River is Cootney County, unincorporated parcels, mostly single-family residents. And then west is also Cootney County, which is undeveloped. I'm going to take you kind of on a walkthrough of the site just to get an idea of the built conditions. This upper right-hand corner, I'm kind of giving you the perspective of where I was standing and the direction I shot the photo. So this is looking east from Riverbend, kind of looking at that 1.61 acre site with the request of the CCS zoning on that area. And this is that eastern embankment that I was speaking of earlier. Pretty steep, I don't know the exact elevation difference on it, but the, you can see that the Greyhound industrial, or excuse me, the Greyhound Park and Event Center is at a higher elevation than this site currently is. This is looking east at the former office building site, the one, the scraped area is where it was recently demolished, and then you can see way in the distance that embankment again, so it is a large site. Looking east down the Spokane River and seeing just the topography from the site sloping down to the actual waterway. And then looking at the west roughly third portion of the site, relatively flat, undeveloped, and this is, this is the large parcel with the R3 zoning. Proposed zoning, as mentioned, two parcels. The larger 10.48 acre parcel is being proposed with high-density residential R3, and the 1.61 acre parcel is being proposed with community commercial services. There are six zone change criteria staff reviews. The first being amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. The future land use designation is commercial. The comprehensive plan states that the purpose of the commercial land use designation is to provide for a wide variety of general service, retail, professional office, and mixed uses, including commercial and multifamily. And the principal use and character outlined in the comprehensive plan includes a broad mix of commercial, retail, professional office, civic, and cultural uses, and residential uses may be permitted by the implementing zoning district. You can see that with the commercial zoning designation, CCS is one of the implementing zoning districts, although R3 is not, and so we do refer to the focus area, which is the Riverbend focus area. And this area should continue to evolve attracting commercial business, high-tech companies, hotels, entertainment establishments, and potential additional residential. So that implementation of the focus area makes the R3 a compliant zoning designation within the comprehensive plan. The next zoning, zone change criteria is that it be consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. The staff report outlines two goals and five policies that were relevant to the annexation. Zoning is also assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features, and to encourage a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. The street classification, traffic patterns are not a concern as the, West Riverbend's a local commercial roadway and provides access to Point Parkway, which has immediate access to Interstate 90. City of Post Falls, as mentioned, will provide water and sewer, and the proposal was reviewed and is in conformance with the land use assumptions within the city's water and water reclamation master plans. For geographic and natural features, the site is adjacent to the Spokane River, and the developer will be required to follow all local, state, and federal regulations associated with the waterway. This will also include a flood development permit, which the city requires. The next criteria is that commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned streets with a higher road classification. As I just mentioned earlier, West Riverbend is a local commercial, and then, of course, Interstate 90. These higher road classifications are in line with the zone change review criteria. The next one is that limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher intensity urban activity. The proposed zoning request is outside the downtown area and is not within the higher intensity use areas. And then the last zone change criteria is that industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential. away from residential zoning. This is not applicable because they're not looking at industrial zoning. This is the list of agencies that were routed and given a chance to comment on the project. Four responded, the Post Falls Police Department, Post Falls Highway District, Cootney County Fire and Rescue, those three were neutral, and then the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality gave general comments that will be applicable at time of construction. I can take questions.
Questions for staff?
No.
Yeah. On the zoning map, right next to the property, it's... You got that, yeah. What is that purple stuff again? What's the SD1?
I might punt to John for this one. This is a special district. It's the, actually, the only property in the whole city that has the zoning.
Yes, it's a smart code, special district. Smart code allows for multiple type special districts, and like Laura mentioned, it is the only one of its kind. It's akin to an industrial zone.
Okay. And what's, what's on that property?
Central four-wheel drive.
Yep. There's four-wheel drive parts. It's, the buildings, you know, the bright green Jaclyn buildings right by the off-ramp.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Can I ask why it's the only one?
Because no one's asked for another special district. Most other smart code, when people were asking for a smart code to fit into like an SC3, SC4, or an SC5 zoning district, being industrial in nature, we didn't have really a good fit for a smart code zone. I can't remember off the top of my head why we went down that path to do a smart code rather than going to an industrial. I believe there was potentially some pre-existing uses that prohibited it. Now I think it probably could go industrial, but not at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Any idea what this CCS parcels and intended use is?
The narrative had described potential small businesses, like a fitness center, a coffee shop, small retail. Things that the residents in that neighborhood could utilize within walking distance.
Anyone else? We'll invite the applicant up. First, before you begin to speak, just let me say thank you for your patience.
Just so you don't feel like we're picking on you, next time you can go second to last.
There you go. Okay. My name is Mike Walker. I'm with Miller Stoffer Architects. I am the owner's representative with regards to the annexation. They asked our firm to help them plan and conceptualize this parcel and help it, get it into the city. So Laura stole a lot of my thunder, so I'm going to quickly go through a lot of my slides. But, so it's a 12-acre parcel. We're currently requesting an R3 and a CCS zone. And to kind of add to what your question about the CCS zone and the R3, what we're trying to achieve with this parcel is kind of a small pocket, mixed-use development that has residential, commercial, and when we say commercial, it's a small coffee shop, maybe there's a little boutique shop, there's a fitness center, things that would support the residential to try to minimize the movement of people across the city to other retail shopping centers and things of that nature. So that's kind of the general premise behind it and why we're proposing it the way we are. So again, this is the site. We've already covered that, parcel A, parcel B, and the total site. You guys are fully aware where this is in the city. It's kind of a unique parcel in that it's on the fringe of the city. It's near the state line. So we see it as a prime residential candidate because of its proximity to the state line. We see a potential buyer being somebody that works in Spokane but wants to live in Idaho and, you know, support our community. We also see, you know, obviously, people that want to be on the edge of town but still get some of the amenities of town and not be too far away. So I kind of wanted to highlight that on this map here. Kind of going into a greater detail, we have Riverbend Commerce Park that's right here, the Greyhound Event Center here, we've got Walmart and Cabela's and the Expo Park over on this area, and then on this side is a county parcel that is just outside the city limits. Talking about traffic, because I know that's always a concern anytime you have a parcel that comes into the city, so I wanted to give kind of some basic amenities. One thing I would note, kind of going back to this, is we have the Centennial Trail that is right along here, we have Riverbend Park, and then I-90, all within one minute of this parcel. So from a traffic and pedestrian movement, it's an ideal site for what we're proposing for multifamily. I would also like to note that the owner's idea is not necessarily apartments. It's owner-occupied, so think more condominiums than your typical apartment complex, which, again, as we know with subdivisions, owner-occupied has a better retention, people take care of the properties. We see the same thing here, so it's a higher-end property from that standpoint. Again, schools are always an impact. You know, anytime you have an annexation, we kind of wanted to highlight some of the distances to the existing schools. And then we know as the city goes more westward, there's likely to be more schools in this region. We're just kind of on the fringe of that, so. Parks and trails. One thing that was noted in your parks master plan is a request for a trail along the waterfront edge, along the Spokane River. This parcel being right against there, we see that as an amenity and are agreeable to that, the developer as well as the design team, so. And then obviously, we have Woodbridge, Gwam, Corbin, all within fairly close distance to this parcel. Emergency services, again, are always an area of talk. KCFR Station Number Two is just up there off of Pleasant View, fairly close. So we really don't see that as a major issue. Utilities, so the site currently has Riverbend Avenue that's already been built out, and there are water and sewer utilities that have already been stubbed to the site. Part of the reason that was done is there is a previous kind of annexation agreement with the property owner that if and when the site to the west ever gets annexed in, they would come in with that annexation. And so as part of some of that development in that area, utilities were already stubbed to the site, so. Again, talking about the trails and the future Spokane River Trail, the streets, all those improvements, so it is a true definition of an infill site because we're bound by the Spokane River. On the other side, it's already, or on two sides, it's already in the city limits. So we see this as a great fit for the City of Post Falls. Again, just talking about some of the verbiage which Laura already covered. So if approved, we see, you know, this brings in additional residential housing in this section of the city that could support some of the commercial uses that are nearby. Again, trying to minimize people traveling across the city to go to work. Because of the trail, or the potential trail that would go along there, it would allow for public views and vistas of the Spokane River. Support future growth of Riverbend Commerce Park, Point Parkway, and the Expo area. Because it's a mixed use, and again, trying to be smart planners, we want to try to provide as many amenities there so people don't have to leave the parcel. Again, unifies the city boundary, and because most of the infrastructures are there, it really puts little to no burden on your existing systems. So at this time, we'll stand for any questions.
Questions for the applicant?
Just a curious question. How many units do you anticipate, or do you have an idea?
I think with an RM, you can get up to 18 units per acre.
Yeah.
I think that's what it is.
It's the R3. Yeah, it's 18 is the base density.
Oh, yeah, R3, sorry. That would be the maximum, but we haven't determined how many units at this time.
Yeah, okay. You don't really have a plan exactly of what you're gonna...
Okay. Wanted to get the first step out of the way before we get too far.
But owner, owner...
Yes.
Okay.
Do you not have a plan, or you don't want to tell us what it is?
Flee the fifth. How's that?
Any other questions for applicant?
No.
The way you were describing it as like a live-work-play area, you're going to put the condos up and the commercial down?
No. That's why there's the CCS zone off to the side and then the residential. So we see primarily residential and then the commercial off onto the one side of the development.
Still the live-work-play concept, just on the side versus...
Right. Instead of stacked, it's...
I'm just going somewhere else to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Across the street.
Anything else for applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir. Public comment, those in favor. Not wishing to speak, but in favor is Wade Jaclyn. Excellent location for this project. Low use currently because of Beck Interchange and proper project for the location. Not wishing to speak, and also in favor is Tom Stoser. Michael Race, I butchered that, I apologize, has requested zoning compatible with street classification, traffic pattern, existing development. Yes, and the Beck Road Corridor is zoned either CCS or I for proposed zoning. This makes sense for the land use. As contemplated by the current zoning map, the roads in the area also have been developed for this type, these types of uses. High-density residential zoning is usually compatible with higher roads, yes. West Riverbend is constructed as asphalt pavement with concrete curbs and typical of other streets throughout the area, so the road classification matches proposed zoning. Limited neighborhood commercial, lower-density residential is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further from high density, yes. The area surrounding is supported by commercial and industrial uses. The implementation of CCS zone would support new development and new jobs. Implementing condominiums at this site would be a live-work-play lifestyle. Zoning is typically assigned for properties sufficient access to major transportation routes, yes. Property is uniquely situated with close access to I-90 interchange and a proximity to access to make the property desirable for both residents and businesses alike. Is it part of the future land use map and comprehensive plan? Yes, through annexing this property in the City of Post Falls, this property will increase the tax base and provide additional revenues for the city. Is requested zoning district consistent with the goals and policies of the comp plan? The requested zoning district is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and complementary to the surrounding properties. It would be positive as it relates to maintaining and enhancing community levels of service, fostering long-term fiscal health of the community, maintaining and enhancing residential quality of life, promoting compatibility, well-designed development, and implementing the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Those of those in favor, do we have any neutral?
None.
Do we have any opposed? Again, questioning the, this is Earl and Becky Brown. Is the zone compatible with street classification, traffic patterns, and existing development? No. This will block our mountain views and create noise and confusion behind our home. Commercial and high-density residential is usually assigned with streets with higher road classifications? No. We are told, we were told before we purchased our home that this would not become a high-density area. Limited neighborhood commercial, lower-density are assigned for properties that proceed further away from high density? No. Comment was, why? Industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes? Yes, fine. Keep it away from our neighborhood. Is it part of the future land use map and comprehensive plan? No. Never saw a future land use map. And is it part of, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? No. Harlan Schleniker, again, with the street classifications, no. No way Riverbend and Beck Interchange can handle to request zone change for annexation of high-density multifamily. Is it, is it typically assigned long streets with high road classification? No. See above comment for question number one, which we just read. Limited commercial, lower-density typically assigned to properties further away? No. This is primarily a commercial area. And industrial zoning is typically assigned to areas with sufficient access to major transportation? Yes, for industrial. Is the request in accordance with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan? No. Not so. And lastly, is it consistent with the comp plan? No. Wishing to speak in opposition, Ryan Geruso?
Geruso.
Okay. I tried, and I apologize. It is a little bit late. Please come up, state your name, and you have four minutes, sir.
Well, Ryan Geruso in 17406 West Laura Lane. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, we're now pushing 11 o'clock and I'm taking up more of your time, but my family is maybe the most impacted by this proposal. We live immediately across the river from the vast majority of this site, and I can't for the life of me tell you whether this proposal would be our gain or our loss. Our view from the river is now of four-wheel parts and the old Dominion Freight Yard with Mount Spokane in the distant background. If this annexation and rezoning is approved, our view might instead be a 45-foot-tall apartment building that obscures the mountains. But at the same time, bringing growth west will undoubtedly make our land more valuable. I estimate valuing our riverfront akin to the more developed sections of the river might increase our valuation by as much as $1 million. What kind of fool would pass up that kind of money? I don't know if I've even earned my right to complain one way or another, having moved to Post Falls just last August after my wife-to-be and I finished school and went looking for a place we could call our forever home. We found a community here that we loved for what it was, not what we hoped it might become, and we're going to make our way here by being as kind and as helpful as all of you that welcomed us here in the first place. In that spirit, I want to leave you with one idea this evening, that of the need for a paradigm shift. Two days ago, the Coeur d'Alene Press featured a front-page article on what the reader could call rightly a boondoggle, a large multi-story apartment building smack dab in the middle of single-family residences, complete with no yard and no parking for tenants, which I'm sure have neither children nor dogs nor cars. Even some of the people that voted for that project voiced their regret. Fast forward to this morning, and I wake up to see my new hometown again on the front page, but this time as the day's featured article in the Wall Street Journal. They called our area "the single hottest real estate market in the country" and recommended in dry economics terms that their readers move here without delay. This is a Cinderella story. An area that just a few years ago was designated as an opportunity zone to try and spur growth that wouldn't happen on its own is now the belle of the ball. That's incredible, and to the extent you can claim a hand in this, excellent job. But in going from an afterthought to the center of attention, we now have the luxury of an abundance of capital and developers interested in growing our community by growing their pocketbooks. I beg you, use our good fortune and success to our advantage. Be as picky and as demanding of the projects you approve as you would if you had to raise your family next to them. I'm no city planner, but a high-density condo surrounded by a light industrial park makes little sense to me. No river view would be worth the isolation of living on a residential island on the opposite side of the interstate from my nearest neighbors. Until recently, this land was for sale as a commercial lot, telling me that this is not part of a longer-term, broader development plan, and in fact, it's barely consistent with the future land use map. with the future land use map and with the comprehensive plan. This instead feels to me like an attempt to capitalize on a real estate boom, and when this boom subsides, as they always do, this proposal will make even less sense than it does today. I hope to see this developed as it is currently zoned, and I might even lease an office in such a building someday and commute by canoe across the river, even though that building too will probably block my view. So enjoy your time at the ball, Cinderella, but don't forget that the bill for hasty decisions comes due at midnight. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your eloquence this late at night. Very well done. Lastly, in opposition wishing to speak, Russ Johnson. Same situation, sir. Address, you have four minutes.
Russ Johnson, 632 South Rabbit Trail, right across the river, directly south of the proposed zoning change, which I would say is not consistent with current stated future land use, commercial, future land, you know, stated as commercial, future land use. This does not seem to be consistent with that at all, except for maybe the CCS designation. Maybe that makes sense, and that's an inroad to the R3, which doesn't, you know, if you're gonna go, go big, right? So I don't think condos, I don't really see how that's consistent with R3, maybe, I'm not, I'm not certain of what that would look like condo-style in an R3, but I feel like that, you know, I feel for you guys being challenged. These are a lot of big challenges that you guys are faced with, with, you know, articles being written, like what he was just citing, and what we're all experiencing here in Post Falls. I would just like to ask you, what do you, as Post Falls citizens, want Post Falls to look like? You have a lot of say in the matter right now during your four-year term, and I appreciate your service to our community. And as a homeowner across the river, I'll just run through some, they've done, I think if this were a good idea, what they presented is very sensible. They're doing a great job of presenting, as we would expect them to. They want to, you know, make a lot of money on that, and I don't, I'm not faulting that because I believe that's, that's within their right to do. They're the landowners. However, if you rezone this property, that is most certainly what will happen. What that looks like is yet to be determined conveniently. I think there would need to be a whole lot more of a plan presented with more answers to some of your questions about exactly how that land would be used for you to make a determination. One of the last statements that Laura made was something, there were some comments from the Environmental Committee that are evidently not important at this time. I would say that is one of the biggest concerns at this time in thinking about the zoning because that is, the first photo that was shown in that slide shows a very steep bank that that property is up against that goes directly down to the river. And this is not a large lot, this is a very small lot. I live on eight acres, so I'm the largest stakeholder across the river. Most of the other properties are five acres, and there's about five other residences over there. And honestly, I feel like they would probably build some good-looking buildings, I would hope so. They probably would look better than the Jaclyn site buildings that I currently see across the river. That would probably be an improvement over what I'm currently looking at, but some of the other impacts really don't make sense. And so, you know, there's a lot of things that are not being talked about so far, that have not been brought to the table, such as the homes across the river, the value of those properties, and the environmental impact being one of the biggest ones, I would have a lot of concerns about that. Erosion control during building.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, thank you. Let me just stick to my list. So I guess, a big question, what do we want, just because, what do we want Post Falls to look like? Just because there's the demand, there's a lot of people moving here, doesn't mean we have to feel the need to supply all of that demand, and we also get to determine what that looks like. Does it really need to look like a bunch of apartments? And why would we think that when homes are really what is more in demand, it seems like? Idaho and Post Falls are attractive right now for a reason. We're the first stop when you come from, when you're trying to flee Washington and wherever else you're coming from, California. And so Post Falls is the presentation of Idaho, and I think that's the biggest question at stake here is, yeah, they've, if this were a good idea for a development to be surrounded by industrial and commercial buildings, if you're really looking at that area, it's all just commercial-industrial and it's backed up to the river, it makes no sense to put an R3 right there. It just, I don't know, it just doesn't make any sense. If it were a good idea, their proposed use of it is the best way to go about it, I think, but it's, I don't know how we could even call that a good idea.
Okay. Time is up. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir.
I guess I just wanted to touch on really what the purview of this meeting is, to talk about the zoning. You know, when you talk about good planning principles, you know, you have a, take industrial, for example, or even commercial for that matter, what is the appropriate use to be next to any one of those, you know? And general planning principles is high-density residential is one of those compatible uses to be next to those adjacent uses. So I would argue that what we're proposing is agreeable to what the zoning allows, as well as what is described in your focus area with the discussion of residential, industrial, commercial in this whole area. And what we would like to provide is essentially all that. The other thing I would also argue is the potential for, for example, the Western site, it's a vacant site, so really what should that site be, for one? For two, I would also argue the Jaclyn site to the north as well as the event center probably are in transition at some point in time within our near future. So do we use what it is now as our basis for what the plan should look like in the future, or should we, you know, set the stage for something else? And I feel like that's what we're trying to do, so.
Questions for applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for staff?
John, I'm looking at this zoning map here, and, you know, it's all commercial around this, but R3, how does really, how does R3 kinda fit in there? I mean, other than the fact that it says a mixture of uses, including residential? Is that as simple as it is?
I think the applicant, as part of the rebuttal, general planning principle stated it correctly, and you've seen that oftentimes in many land use actions, whether you have a highly classified roadway or future commercial being developed, you see developers desiring to put higher densities up against it as their means to mitigate their impact. On other areas, on this one, that's not the case, but they are a compatible adjoining use. Now, we do have the buffer table that we are currently updating, and we actually take multifamily treated akin to a commercial and separate it from like a single family, and we're going to be going toward, we're gonna be buffering multifamily up against single family for a reason, because multifamily is one of those uses you put up against those higher intended uses.
Any other questions?
Can you remind me again what the purple is?
Smart food.
It's like a unicorn, right? It's...
Special District, and it's part of smart code. From what John had described earlier, it's more of an industrial use. Maybe it wasn't exactly compatible with industrial when it was zoned, and it wasn't really a smart code zoning, so it was kind of a way to make existing uses conforming with a new zone.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Anything else?
No.
No, thank you very much. We'll go ahead. Close it out, open it up for comments. Any thoughts?
I think it's, I think it fits good in that area. I think it, what I'd like to hear a little bit more on the plan about how many units that they want to put in there, probably, but if it falls within the zoning and they're within their rights, you know, I think it's something that needs to, I know a lot of people that work at ALK and Raycap and out in there, and they drive all the way out to where I live, you know, on the prairie, and so I know there are a lot of single people that move in, and they come in from Washington State, and it might be the perfect spot, you know, and to see something, nobody wants to see another great big building with grass on it, no offense.
Wow.
I do like looking at it from the freeway. But, you know, I think it'd be great, you know?
It's getting late in here.
Other comments? Anyone else?
I can almost see that, is this is a future of that, all that land along there. I mean, it's riverfront, whether, any way you look at it, and it's valuable property, and so I can see it going more residential as it goes along than commercial or something or industrial. So I think this is just the beginning of what's gonna go all along the river there.
I agree, and I think that having them be condos instead of apartments is, that's a big selling point for me. I would much rather see condos than apartments. Owner, owner occupied, people live there. Condos on the river seem to be very well taken care of and very saleable.
Anyone else? No? Two weeks ago, I sat with my wife in Kendall Yard and told myself, gosh, how amazing would it be to have something like this where we live? And for years, I've looked at this particular area with the idea, like we talked about, the live-work-play, that you can have an office. I don't question, although we will see it, but I don't question the quality of product that's gonna come forth. To me, it's a good fit. I think you're right, it's gonna continue to get developed, but I think it is, it's a piece that a lot of people have waited a long time to be able to see, so that we can take our business there and we can go have dinner and we can go enjoy some of these pieces. It provides some housing options for individuals. I look at it as a win-win because, again, the individuals that are involved, it's gonna be done at a quality level, so that would be my two cents. At this point, at three after 11, I would entertain a motion from anyone.
Ready?
You got to do it, or you got me to do it?
Answer's ready, I can see it in my eyes.
All right. Yeah, I have it here, I think. I move to recommend approval of Jaclyn-Riverbend Annexation ANNX-0003-2021, as presented with conditions 1 through 3, as contained in the staff report, with a zoning designation of R3 and CCS.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Call for vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Slaughower?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right. I'm number five this evening. I'm not assuming that we have any trainings or anything set aside, but administrative staff reports...
We're good on five, nothing.
Nothing on five? Commission comments, anything for the good of the order?
Good night.
I would just say this, just, I think sometimes people forget that each one of you that are sitting up here do so voluntarily, and the fact that you, for the second meeting this month, came in and gave your time to the community, which we hope that we make the right decisions, and all we're simply trying to do is be able to help with responsible growth. I just want to say thank you to all of you guys because it is not always the easiest thing, and you're not paid anything, so that's just the way that it is. So thank you. You're welcome. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you to the staff for the work that you guys put together, and if there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.